Okay, so as noted on the agenda, starting at seven o'clock is the Planning Board's training. By New York State law, planning boards and zoning boards require a certain number of hours of training each year to kind of keep them up to date on topics that concern their review. So often Jennifer or I will do trainings. Tonight, we're going to Dutchess County Planning Federation does a series of trainings. And there is a, there was a lunch and learn webinar that was, it shows an hour, but it's really just over 30 minutes, so we'll get through as much of it as we can. But it was, it's talking about architectural design and building design. Oftentimes, we talk about building design being something like art, and certain people love a buildings design, while others feel that it is hideous. We hear all kinds of words. So this webinar was an instructor trying to break down some of the components of architectural design to help folks think about what they like about a building, what they don't like about a building, and be able to express that in more kind of, I guess, technical terms. So we will play that for, until, and then the meeting starts officially at 7:30.
But I often like to think of it a little bit as a healthy mindset, that 80/20, that idea that 80% of what you were doing is, you know, is good, that 20% can be a little bit not so great, but 80% of the ugliness, or what I hate about that new building in new construction and renovation can be resolved with good massing and proportion. So why are we here? And one word was right, with massing and proportion, we want to have solid reasons behind our design review comments, something beyond just like a gut check of, well, I just don't like it. And we want better buildings in our villages, our towns, our cities, our hamlets. We want better design outcomes, and that's why we're here today. And I'm hoping we can stay relatively short here so we can get into a lot of question and answer, because I think that the root of a lot of this comes down to like what you've experienced on the boards that are part of our design reviews, or you use the builders that you've seen build in your places. When we talk about things that people should do when they're doing a design review, if you should do it, there needs to be a reason. Architecture has a reason, and it's the loss of a lot of the understanding of those reasons that left us with doing things for no good reason, things that are pretty arbitrary, that we don't really know why we're doing that. And everything from the way materials should be applied, to why you would make a sloped roof versus a flat roof, to why you would reference a certain thing, should have a reason. And for that reason, you'll notice that I don't have any specific numbers that were in this presentation. I'm not going to say you should have X number of feet before this, or X number of height before that, because all of that should be really contextual, really locally based, hyperlocal, on best places in the region where you are. But there are some things that we call the basics. And when we're talking about the basics, we're going to start from there. And we've got it. And when we're talking about those basics, I always tell people to start from the top. You should start at the roof. And the reason why is because we'll often use the word massing. We hear the word massing, and that the massing should be appropriate, the massing should be contextual. And it's from the roof. When we're looking at the roof, if you can have relatively simple uniforms, you're likely to get a better composed building. If your roof is already really complicated, you're going to have a really hard time when it gets to the rest of the building. And so when you're looking at that roof and understanding it, starting from a roof plan instead of starting from elevation can be the first way to start getting even more composed building. And we'll talk about the difference between that yellow core and those blue wings in just a moment. But after we come from that roof, we're looking at the vertical division of the building, or bays. So bays are a way to help us organize the building. And bays are vertical because people are vertical. So when we're talking about a bay, where each of these lines are falling, the dash lines are more or less structural bay. So if this was like the family housing, for example, each unit is usually going to be approximately 30 feet wide, sometimes a little bit less, like 24 feet wide for a one-story unit. And so the structural bay that happens in between may be about 12 feet wide, we call them 13 feet wide. And you'll see that in those bays, you can organize the windows. So it's the organization of those windows and windows that create those bays. That bay, so that rhythm helps us understand how to break a building down. Sometimes the bays are really regular, like you can see with the solid area right here. And sometimes there can be special bays that pop out that might be a little bit larger. And sometimes the bays can help us understand, when we're pop forward to some sort of different architectural expression, or other things that help organize and create the light of building. Horizontal is also really important, so we thought from a vertical perspective, and now we're thinking from a horizontal perspective. And the thing that it comes down to there is buildings have a base, a middle, and a top. That base is how the building meets the ground. It's the pedestrian experience, so that when you're walking around, and that's your experiencing, we as people don't perceive anything above three to four stories very well at all. So anything that's happening much taller than that, unless you're actively craning our necks to look up at it, are really perceiving anything below that. Really critical is that base, is that one story and that ground experience. And often, we want that experience to be taller, in taller proportion, we as people are taller than we are wide generally, and we're looking for that height. The building in the middle is how it relates to its neighbors, and we're looking for simplicity there. We're looking for repeatable elements, we are looking for those bays to be really consistent, and looking at something that's not super busy, not super common, but not trying to do interesting for the sake of interesting. And then the top is how that building meets the sky. What is the roof line, or the cornice? What are the eve details? What are the things that help you encourage delight in how that building meets the sky? The American Institute of Architects, the AIA, did a campaign a few years ago called it up, and it's talking a lot about this idea of looking to the top of the building, looking at the exciting things that can happen in that delight where the building meets the sky. But we don't only see buildings being elevation. We might, on some of our design review boards, which is one of the things that we often encourage reviewers to always have some sort of three-dimensional things submitted from your house, even simple. But when they're looking at something in three dimensions, we want to identify what is the main body, what's the main core of that here in the lower right-hand corner, and what are the weights? If it's really hard to identify what's the main body, and what are the beams or the patterns, then high arch may be missing from the design. And it gets difficult, because of course, when you're in a review situation, the building is usually pretty well designed, pretty well set, but it's really hard to understand how it works if you can't break it into the core and the additions or wings that are put onto that. It's also really good in context where you might be dealing with historic buildings, or dealing with forerary buildings, and you want to see a transition between what was the core, what's part of this thing, and what might be a more modern and contemporary position. Windows, as we start zooming into details, windows are the eyes of the building, and one of the most critical things to get right. For all intents and purposes, I usually tell people when they're doing reviews, just think vertically. Your windows, in almost all cases, should be taller than they are wide. And not just the window itself, but the window panes or lights, L-I-T-E, in between. So you'll see these different window proportions here, you have one over one, three over one, four over one, six over one. And a lot of these, when you're looking at these, we're talking about how many panes are on top versus how many panes with lights are on the bottom. And the divisions in between are called ones. And so when we're looking at that division, in this case, all of them are taller than they are wide. And even when you get to a six over one, for example, a really common division of lights is four over one, or four over four. And so if you did, instead of having six divisions, you had four divisions here, they would be really close to be more wide than they are tall. In this proportion window, they would be just taller than wide, which is good. But most of the time, if someone's doing a window that's, say, five feet tall, which is really common, a three over five is a three foot wide by five foot tall window, then if you're doing four divisions in that window, they're going to be a little wider than they are tall. Those proportions are the things that start throwing off the look, and you're trying to turn around, well, I don't like this as much as maybe historic little taller windows in my village, that's why. So you're looking for something that's more vertical, taller than it is wide. And so when you're going through those, I like to think in terms of roof, porch, eve, windows, ground. And the reason why I call these things out, because they are usually the most typical things that are wrong when you're doing a design review. And by wrong, I don't just mean arbitrarily, I mean there are reasons why the details exist, and what we're looking at, why are they showing up in the way they're showing up in this design review. One of the things that we talked about, roof, making sure that that roof is really simple, that also comes to that discussion about having a main body and wings, so making sure there's a primary core, and that's also probably going to be a primary main roof, and then any wings, secondary rooms that attach to that. Then you end up with a porch, with the face of the building being the primary pedestrian experience. That porch, you also want, if there's any sort of porch on the building, you want that to also be really core to the pedestrian experience. So you want to make sure that the openings on the porch are also taller than they are wide. You want to make sure that there's careful chipping to the columns and the beams that the columns support. Then the eve is the end eve detail, and that detail the edge of the roof. So when you're looking there, you may have heard the term for a pork chop eve, which is up here. That pork chop eve is now one of the most common ways to finish a box eve, a closed eve. And it is, the reason why, is because it's looking at a pretty hand-fisted way of being able to close that off. If you look at a lot of historic buildings, you'll see a lot more elegant ways of finishing that detail. You'll see a eve return is something that's often called. And you'll hear carpenters say that that's really expensive to do today. And there's some mixed back and forth on that. But often, another way to do it is just going and angling the saw bit, which is a part of it runs over the eve. So instead of finishing it with this box, you can just go along the rafters and finish it that way. And so those are different ways that you can help with a more refined eve detail that feels better to the pedestrian walking on the ground. And then ground being a lot of what we talked about when there's already paper. And then ground being how the building actually meets the ground, material transition. Is there some sort of skirt or divot, or whatever material, a brick or siding, and how it actually meets the ground? And this isn't limited to style either, so we can look back, these are a series of small craftsmen buildings, and this is looking at some of those buildings from the Victorian. But you're looking at all of this in time, it's the roof, porch, the eve, the windows, and the ground. Here's a photo of that pork chop eve, in case the drawing didn't really make sense. You've probably seen it many, many times. And it's a simple detail that can completely change how that eve feels to somebody who's walking along the street. So here's a big example to get into that. So the roof, you have a really simple roof corner. The pedestrian experience, so they don't have like post sawed porch, they have this overhang, which I think is very cool. You can approach that as enhancing that pedestrian experience, but that's from the front. There's no pork chop eve, you get into the eve, and you can see this eve detail. They actually use one-by-four lengths there at Allen Bennett Sawthorn, which is a really beautiful detail, and they include that. There's more vertical windows, and there's a clear skirt as you transition from the siding to the base. So you end up with that transition to the roof, porch, eve, windows, bracket. An important point here too, is that simplicity is not the enemy. So often, in the codes that we are enforcing, or the ideas that we have, we are afraid of blank walls, we are afraid of a lot of things that are really scary if people come into the room. But because of that, we have unintentionally often legislated out simplicity in terms of simple building passing, simple materials, not doing multiple materials, and a lot of things that when we're looking back toward, what are some of our best built-up places, we can see that a lot of them are actually much more simple than a lot of our codes on our floor today. So just something to consider as we're doing a design review, that simplicity is not the enemy, as long as the proportions that we're looking at are really strong. But I want to talk a little bit about the site, and where the buildings are cited, because since we've gone through those bases, there's something about where the building is and the placement that also is critical to doing this design review. And so we're going to talk about in rural context and in urban context. So rural, thinking about the countryside rather than the town. When you're talking about the countryside, and talking about a rural landscape, what becomes really critical is something that we call the cultural landscape. And so that has to do with scenic landscapes, like lettuces, pastures, tree walls, tree roads, but also historic artifacts, like rock walls, pillars, fences. And the biggest pressure that happens in rural development is balancing development pressure that is inevitably coming for a lot of rural environments with the character of the areas that we're in. And so when we talk about character, we have to define what that actually means. So this map is a strictly high-expensive map, which is a little bit north of the city. It was a, it is a borough, but it was originally 28 estates that over time had been carved up into a variety of different sized lots. New lots today need to be about five acres wide. And on the map, you can see an orange color and a orange-yellow, green color, and those are the two character areas in some of the sites today, the estate character area and the farm character area. The estate character area is characterized by the fact that almost all of the big estates were there, and so there's a lot of formality to the landscape, to the existing Roman walls, to the location of the landscape, like historic tree roads. And that really changes when someone wants to do something new in that area, build a new house, or add an accessory structure, or anything like that. The Historic Architectural Review Board, who is doing some review for this, looks at it in the context of the fact that it's in the estate character area. And that changes how we think about and how we will approach any sort of design review or design guidance that we may give applicants. The farm character area is primarily ancillary farms that supported the original estates. And so the area is much more relaxed in character, a lot more in-form in comparison to the formality of the estate character area. And so one of the things that I encourage people in their developing tools, with their places, such as defining character areas based on where they are, and if there's not good character to draw from, to really look at what region is there. Where are the places that you go to visit, or go for fun in your region, and why do you go there? Why do you like to walk around there? Why do you go to that Main Street, or walk down that shop? Or why do you like to take a drive to that area in the countryside? And then you can actually establish what are the things that create the character of that place, document those things, and use it to help give guidance that you give applicants for your development. So you look at those patterns that align with the character, you look beyond just materials. So it's not just, well, everything out there are barns, and all those barns use fieldstone, so any new development should have fieldstone. That's a little bit of a false formula there. It's like, it's not just about fieldstone, it's about, hey, these are all site, really full of code, but these all have this amount of landscape that's near them. Whatever these characters are, those are part.
That might be a good place to stop for the training today, and I think if there's any, I think if the board has any discussion, we kind of have like a few minutes to talk about that, otherwise, I think we can jump in a bit, I think we're just losing a little bit of the loading of the video from the wifi. But I think we talk about, I think we've been talking a lot lately about the CMS district and the HDLO design guidelines that I think talk about a lot of those aspects that she was just going through in terms of window proportions, cornice design, right, breaking buildings up into three horizontal pieces, and vertical breaks as well. So you can see some of that show up in the City of Beacon Code. So I thought it would be helpful to kind of just hear someone walk through that, since we don't always go through exactly why, what's in our code is there.
One thing that I'm kind of, I've been thinking a lot about lately, and I don't know if there's a well-formed question or an easy answer to it, but I think in trying to gauge the reception of the Beacon City, you know, to new development, there is, I think, a process going on where people are looking at some of the, you know, if they are preservationists, or if they appreciate the historic fabric of Main Street, they're in love with the buildings that come from the Victorian era, or the early 1900s, and in the city, it seems they were generally built on smaller lots. So you have, you know, relatively narrow facades, and with individual details, and I think what we seem to be seeing more and more is larger lots being purchased and developed, and larger buildings put on them. And so we're trading individual idiosyncratic, unique, distinct buildings for bays on much larger buildings. And I don't know, I think that's something that the city should take on, you know, perhaps as a, as something to sort of wrestle with a little bit, and see if there's a way to approach it that would maybe gain some more support from the community. But I don't know if that's something that other places have grappled with and discussed, or whether there's been, you know, anything published, or, but it is something that, to me, it seems to be like a very bedrock kind of difference in approach.
Yeah, I think you see some codes, and even I think the City of Beacon Code has a regulation on length of buildings in certain areas, right? And so I think you do see that in some zoning codes, especially in the Hudson Valley, to try and limit a very long building. But I don't think I've quite yet seen a code, I could do some look at research in this, I don't think I've seen a code limiting a building facade to 30 feet, like you might have historically seen, right? And I think a lot of that comes down to the economy of scale of construction right now. I think that's why we're seeing this trend, both because of construction styles that allow you to build larger buildings, as well as because of the cost of materials, the cost of labor, and the economy of scale of building a larger building versus a bunch of small, individual, separate buildings. So I think there is a balance there between, between the economics of construction and the design, right, and the historic kind of foundation of design. But there is, there is some, definitely some codes that limit the length of, the length that a facade can be, or I think our code has language in there that there has to be breaks every, but I think it's a, it's a good observa, it's a fair observation.
If you don't have a pleasing rhythm, you end up with, you know, repeated bays, and what, you know, I think to a lot of people is like, okay, this is massive and it's monotonous compared to what I, you know, aesthetically prize in the historic landscape.
Yeah.
But it's tough.
Or you've seen some communities go the other way, and say like, you do have to have a material change, or I've seen some communities that have like put in a lot of complication to their design regs, that say like, so every 30 feet, you have to change the material, you have to change the roof style, right? And you get what ends up looking, I think a lot of architects refer to it, it was like a Disneyland, Main Street style, right?
There's definitely been, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on this board of the fear of an uncanny valley, where you try to go too far in that direction.
Yeah.
And you get Main Street Disney, and it looks plasticky, and everybody's using the same cornice bracket or something, you know, the same catalog, and it falls flat. But, and there's some weird, you know, there's been some weird things that I've seen, like existing developments where the design toyed with the idea of trying to, you know, create the effect of different facades, but then they used the same color across all of them, or the same siding, and ended up, you know, kind of like punting whatever they would have gained otherwise by switching the material. And some of the townhome developments where you're trying to simulate cheek by jowl, you know, Victorians and Colonials or whatever, and if you don't, there's at least one example that I'm not going to name, that they, massing-wise and design-wise, they went for it, and then one area, they put the same clavards and the same color across the whole front of the thing, so it like, it like sort of homogenized what would have otherwise been an attempt at creating a, you know, a design difference from, from unit to unit. But yeah, it's something that troubles me, and I think we're going to have, you know, it's, it's something that just is going to continue to come up again and again.
Appreciate the comment.
No, I just wanted to have my microphone on. But just, I guess I should maybe fill in some of the space here. I, you know, this is something I've thought about a lot. I have, one of the ways that communities develop like a consistent aesthetic is by having a general consensus among, that's shared by the people that are, that are developing it, right? And traditionally, no one would have built a building on Main Street that didn't have a level of detail and articulation that they did in the traditional materials, because they would be ashamed, it would be like going out in your, outside in your pajamas, right? It was socially unacceptable to build buildings that didn't have a certain amount of community character that was, that was offered, right? That's something that some communities develop, and there's an understanding, like in Cold Spring, some more wealthy communities that have had a history of very vigorously fought for design, elevated design standards, and a level of design sophistication that's higher, and it's a level of expectation. And also, sometimes, and more often than other communities, designs get shot down. And so people understand that they have to, they have to try harder, and they try to have to, they have to try to work within that consensus and, and work, and make things more, that are hard-walling, physically.
Yeah, I want to say to that, and then I think we're almost done with the time, is I think there's a, the other kind of side of this, or like element to this conversation, is that I think some of those same policies that have been very focused on design, specifically design that favors single-family homes or small-scale development, have been seen as almost exclusionary housing policies that have prevented the production of rental units or multifamily housing in our communities, not just in New York and the Hudson Valley, but across the United States, I think is recognized by urban planners as kind of a trade-off that has been made there. So I think there's, there's obviously, I think, many communities want and deserve to have, you know, some level of control over the design of buildings in their community, but I think we've also seen that historically taken to a, to an extent that has prevented much-needed housing from being built in communities as well.
Yeah, but I mean, that's not an issue we've run into here, though. I mean, I think what you're, I've seen articles like what you're talking about, places in California, that everybody's a single-family home that they have yet purchased, you know, for, it was affordable in 1945 when the person on a teacher's salary bought it, and now they're entrenched in fighting every single apartment building in their community preventing the construction.
Oh, no, it's talked about in general, about like the amount of communities that are zoned for single-family homes only, right, as a means to kind of keep that form rather than larger forms. So I think it's affected almost every community.
Not an issue we have here, though, for sure.
I mean, the origin of that was places like Yonkers in New Jersey, where that was literally exclusionary, where that was, they only allowed single-family homes in order to have a certain income level.
We actually, in the, in the industry of urban planning, talk about it in many, there's very blatant exclusionary housing policies, and then there's more subtle ones that have still had similar effects.
On that note, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Welcome to our August 12, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody here on a wonderful day, and let's begin. As you can see, we have kind of a half-full house, but nevertheless, our hearts and souls are still here and do what we need to do. I want to, Jennifer, did you want to make any mention about the form or anything right now?
Just with respect to the number of board members that are here, we have a bare quorum of four members, so any vote that the board takes tonight has to be unanimous in order to pass. We need four of the seven members to vote affirmatively in order to approve anything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On that note, I just get a motion to approve the minutes from, is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number one, continued public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval mixed-use commercial and residential. 291 Main Street submitted by Telephone Building Beacon LLC.
Good evening, Acting Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Taylor Palmer of the law firm of Cuddy and Fader. I am joined by our project team tonight. REA is presently loading up the computer, so we'll get those visuals up there in just a moment. I am joined also by Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as Beth Salig, who's from Hudson Cultural Services, our specialist on historic and cultural preservation. To that end, as you mentioned, Acting Chairman, we are before you tonight for our continued public hearing in connection with our application to construct a two-story and partial three-story mixed-use addition to the telephone building, along with associated site improvements. For efficiency this evening, I am going to steal all of REA's talking points, where I usually leave him at least some, and then I'll turn it over to Beth to give some additional points relating to the preservation and prominence of the telephone building by emphasizing the character-defining features of that building. As you'll recall, and I'm just buying REA a couple seconds here of airtime, at our last meeting, we did start with a brief stroll down Main Street, and tonight, we're going to try and visualize that stroll for you through the benefit of renderings that we've had prepared and other visuals. The intent here is to visualize those renderings of the telephone building where it stepped, where the addition that we're proposing is stepped back and subservient to that building. That really is best seen through the development of the site plans that REA has previously presented. That was to help identify really the installation of the new building. But where this building is really best seen is from the corner of Main Street and South Brett, where there are no changes to the building proposed, but for the new uplighting of the cornice that we discussed at the last meeting, and in a minute, we'll show a nighttime view of that that we incorporated into the submission as well. As we discussed, the makeup of that neighborhood really starts with South Walnut. And if I may, I'm just going to give REA one second here. No, it's not coming up. That's why we should bring the boards, the old, the old style. So again, we'll get the visuals up in just a minute, but I'll maybe, REA, do you want to use?
Do you want me to present? I have the stuff up right now, if you want. If it's the things that have been submitted, I can share it.
John, she's chuckling over here.
Take the toggle back.
For the record, all of the applications tonight have timely submitted all materials. There is no supplemental information. That was, that was, it was a bit of entertainment, Mr. Acting Chairman, at the last meeting. Mr. Chairman. Just give Natalie a second here. Put her under the gun.
What document?
It's just the rent, the new renderings that were included. There's one from the corner of Main and South Brett.
While we're waiting for those to come up, can you confirm that those, that the setback in feet of the facade of the addition, that it's scaled accurately on the renderings? And I know, I'm just asking this because generally, I think we say, you know, renderings are helpful illustrative aids, but we don't, you know, it's the plans that we hold people to, the elevation drawings and the scale drawings. I think in this case, we're putting maybe a little extra emphasis on the renderings because we're trying to, you know, demonstrate that the new addition is sort of subservient to the facade of the existing building. So I was going to ask that question. How comfortable are we?
Yes, yeah, REA responded that to the last meeting when it was brought up, and Kevin may have mentioned it at the last meeting.
Because this is setback a little further than it was.
So tonight, we set it back only one, we actually set the building further back. So the building had, the new addition has been set back previously, but based on your comments at the last meeting, to try and further that, we incorporated some new renderings, which Natalie's brought up on the screen now, to try and help understand or relate. Why we moved that building back was because when you take the intersection looking west at the building, you can even use just the night sky one here, that's right there on the left side of your screen, you can see that it's really, and that tree is an existing tree, right? All of the installations that you're seeing there are representative of what you see today. It's hard to even see the relationship or even the addition at all from this prominent street view. So we've been focusing a lot of the conversation on looking down Main Street and looking next to the car wash, up at the brick facade and the cornice there from the other elevation. But why we moved it further back was again to help make this new addition subservient to the telephone building, where it really will be seen from three sides in its full glory. So if I would, Natalie, thank you for agreeing to do this.
You have to call me Vanna, though.
Vanna. Vanna, I would like a RSTL, if you could put the other rendering that we added, which takes a little bit further expansive view, coming from, so this, view one is the original view that we provided, which now shows the building setback, the additional foot to your point, Len, than in the previous discussion, and then view.
Two. It's just, I'm slow. It's, now I understand why it's so delayed for you guys.
So view two shows the daytime from the intersection with South Brett, and then if you go over to the view looking east, one to the left of that, I'm sure what number that is, view four. Great. So what we tried to do was again, take you down for the stroll from, from Main Street. So I'll get back to sort of the script here. As we make up that neighborhood, it does really start at South Walnut, where you head towards East Main Street, passing the Alps Choppy Factory, the Chinese Restaurant before the entrance of the car wash, which you can't see here, you can only see the exit to the car wash next to where our installation will be. Of course, the storing of the U-Hauls across the street from Key Food, Krispy Kreme, and now the Careful MD. Mostly one-story buildings, where two-story buildings are required in this corridor. Then you pass the attached buildings with Finders Keeper, Smokers Mecca, and Beacon Fade and Shave Shop, which you're seeing represented now in the drawing. So we took a step back to give context of what we're doing. And again, that one foot is coming into play with our discussion with relation to the additional setback that we proposed for the addition. Here.
Sorry, just one question real quick. The, the two-story thing you just mentioned, and CMS requires a minimum of two stories, is there any lower that the addition could be built and still be two stories from what it is now? I mean, like, I'm not talking like an inch or whatever, like realistically, would you be able to take it down a foot or two?
I think we've, I think we've looked at that, but I'll let REA speak specific to what that height of relationship is.
Yeah, I mean, we started where we're just below the cornice of the existing building, and then, you know, based on some discussion we had, we tried a little bit lower. And, but that sort of messed up some of the alignments across the building. So the consensus was that, you know, keeping it where we had it originally was better than the lower version.
Well, but, okay, so there's, I think, what's the minimum floor height on the first floor? Is it 12 feet? Someone here knows the answer to this.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a.
I mean, I guess what I'm really getting, what I'm really getting at is simply the question of working within a requirement to be at least two stories. Are you kind of stuck with a building that's this minimum height?
Based on the relation.
If you want the windows to line up, but if, if you didn't want the windows to line up, would that make a significant difference here?
We could get a little bit lower, but then, you know, it could clash with all the other stuff.
Right.
Physically, it could be lower, yeah.
So I think part of the discussion, what we're trying to emphasize here is that we did focus on this viewpoint, which I'm going to ask you to please move away from and go back to the new renderings, because we focused too much time on this, this specific corner. The intention of here is to show, we've won through all the specific criteria and the special permit factors, and Beth is going to speak to the specifics that we kind of left off from at the last meeting. So I hear your comment, Mr. Jensen, with respect to the building height. As we recall, this building was previously proposed to be, I believe it was three stories throughout in the additional, in the original installation. It has come down to the minimum two-story requirement, to the extent that that makes these functional units and a commercial space. We again stepped it back and allowed, and I'll go through some of those specific changes, but we wanted to highlight the fact that what we're talking about and what the special permit regulations are trying to control is the relationship of the existing telephone building to the addition and from the program that we're proposing, which we've reduced further. We didn't get to, I kept bringing up the party in the back. We never even got to talk about that at the last meeting because those materials were provided to you. We were hoping to just be able to present them to you at, you know, at or before the meeting. So now we've included that into the submission. So we've taken all of these code-specific criteria and implemented or worked them into the design to create this building that is subservient to telephone building. It is not fictionally creating a historic element and does again manage sort of all of those important characteristics. And we even did an infill analysis that addresses all of the recent projects that have been proposed, been, has been approved or proposed that are infill projects. We're thinking about projects like 151 Main Street, and then Spa Beacon, 416 Main Street, now The Wild, next door to the Beacon Hotel, 536 Main Street, which is next to those historic buildings. Now I just think of it as Hudson Valley Jane, and next door is the, is Barish's Building, which is another commercial building. So all of these inner relationships and how they work, we tried to take elements of that and then make this even more consistent with those criteria by stepping this back. Most of those buildings, if you look at them, actually jut out and are, are really sort of in front of some of those existing historic buildings in their respective corridors. But with this application, what we've tried to do, and with that backdrop, trying to emphasize how this project started and how significantly we've scaled it back, the overall footprint of the addition has been reduced, as I mentioned, and its design has been altered to abbreviate the L shape at the back, such that the addition is now stepped back further from Main Street by the additional foot which we mentioned, and then from the South Brett frontages along the property. And then we also created a green space in the back separating us from the next neighbor over the property. So we've, we've done a lot more than just the front. We've stepped back the front and tried to show that relationship from the vantage points that you're really seeing, unless you were quite literally standing next to that blue pole looking up at this addition. There's no question that that is a new addition, but we're still preserving all these elements of this historic building. In addition, as we discussed at the last meeting, we did include a linear LED lighting along the lower cornice of the telephone building. That was intended to provide a soft glow to highlight the profile of the historic cornice on this historic structure. Finally, a portion of the proposed cornice on the addition has been replaced with a glass eve skylight to create a connection between the telephone building and the addition, which does also provide visual separation, softening transitions, and tries to enhance the visibility of that brick, again, facade of the existing telephone building. So these refinements are designed to ensure that this addition is complementary and doesn't interfere with the experience of the telephone building. Again, where it's fully exposed on three sides, the L building steps it back, gives a full exposure. It adds additional green space and buffering. It moves the building further back to help, again, from the corners where you're most prominently going to see this building unchanged, keeping it that way. So all of these things are designed to work together to do that, but most consistently represent feedback from your comments that have reduced this building and changed its sort of shape, texture, and how it relates to this corridor. With that, we also added, as I mentioned, some landscape areas. We're now at around, I think, 11%, I think Natalie had some comments to the street trees and things, but we've increased that to try and meet those criteria, added 53 additional shrubs and proposed landscaping, revised lighting details, and now I get to say it, we got rid of the glare bomb. So with all things being said, we've tried to do all the things that have, we've seen in other projects, for example, adding bike racks within this transition zone between Main Street and along the frontage of the premises. So all of these things that we saw that this board has reviewed in other projects in the CMS and the HLO, we've tried to work into this design to ensure that it meets those criteria. With that, I'm going to ask Beth to speak very specifically to the special permit criteria, and then of course, if REA can ever get his computer working, we'll try and re-highlight, but thank you, Vanna, for your assistance.
Try to be succinct. Last time when I was here, just for the record, Beth Selig, Hudson Cultural Services. The, there was a lot of discussion on the board about three specific points from the HLO, section 134-7A.
I want to bring your mic a little closer to your.
Oh, sorry. Is that better? Yeah, okay. We focused a lot on section 134-7A, 134-7B1 and B2, and I'd like to just revisit those points briefly. I did submit a memo, so you may have already read these, so I won't go word for word, but I'll go through them quickly. And to just say that the addition has pulled from the surrounding buildings and the similar properties within that streetscape, as Taylor was just talking about. The brick tone, it's sufficiently differentiated in color to point out or highlight the fact that it's not part of the historic building, but it also ties in in terms of patterning with the car wash that's next to it. And then even the storefront window that is proposed ties into sort of the fenestration of the car wash, but as well as the convenience store that's a little further off the street. So those additional elements did come in, so we can, you know, correlate and get inspiration from the surrounding buildings. The setback was brought back for a total of 10 feet, so it is further back than the plan that.
I'm sorry, how many feet is it setback?
10. According to the site plan, it's 10 feet. So it's fully, it's a good, a good distance off the sidewalk. And I had said, hey, that's the great place to put the bikes, but that, that didn't seem to fly. Nobody wants to be tripping over bikes as they go into the store. In addition, the rear portion of the building, again, we didn't talk a whole lot about that, but it has been reduced, which increases the view of the telephone building. The rear view of the building from South Brett is now much more visible if you're coming up the street towards Main Street. And the, the changes in the addition, the fact that it's subservient and it's sort of setback and it's much smaller now, increase the visual prominence of the telephone building, and it doesn't detract from any of the historic characteristics of the building when you're looking at it. As Taylor did mention, there are some new, as part of the new design, there's a skylight eve, so that if you're standing in front of the building, you can see the cornice that goes all the way around, and that skylight eve also highlights that brick wall where the addition will be flush against to it. Looking at the addition and whether or not it'll damage or obscure, obscure character-defining features, the goal is to reduce them to the maximum extent possible. As Taylor mentioned, this project, when it first came before you, was a three-story building, which did overwhelm the telephone building, and it was much higher. It has been substantially reduced. Lighting has been proposed on the cornice line, which further highlights and accentuates that, that very important detail. You can also, with the new addition of the skylights, if you are in that storefront, if you're inside the interior through the skylights, you would be able to look up and see the cornice as well, which I think might be pretty cool at night with all the lighting on. It might be a nice, nice visual. And that also accentuates that brick sidewall as well. The, this new, the new plan in front of you does show the addition as being substantially smaller in size and scale in relationship to the historic building. And the, the overall reduction in size, and especially the diminished size in the rear, does seem to celebrate the historic building a little more, making it, you know, highlighting it and sort of pushing it forward into prominence. And that was, yeah, there is, that was what I was going to, to highlight and touch on, and just, you know, when we're look at the goals of these, of this guidance and whether or not we've brought the addition back to, you know, reduce all, all potential impacts to the maximum extent possible, I think, from where this project started to today, that's pretty evident if we compare those two designs. And I know REA's got them somewhere in his files. So that's, you can see in that visual just how much taller the proposed structure was and how it sort of towered over the telephone building. And when you go back and look at where it is now, we've really brought everything back in response to the comments of the board.
We don't, we don't have resolutions here, or draft resolutions.
Right, it's still public hearing, yeah.
A thought. Are we going to be asked to close the public hearing tonight?
It's possible. It depends on whether there's any, you know, new information for the applicant to address for the next meeting. But otherwise, you know, the public hearing has been open for a number of months. We seem to be hearing the same comments.
Well, yeah, and also there's only the four of us up here, so it, what I'm really kind of getting at is should we be trying to move this along to the next meeting?
Yeah, so what, what I would suggest in that regard is, in the event the board feels it's appropriate tonight to close the public hearing, you can do so, and then we can schedule this for a discussion at the next planning board meeting, without the preparation of a resolution one way or another, but when you have a fuller complement of the board available to have the full discussion, we can have a full and frank discussion as far as the analysis of the standards.
I mean, I've got a, I have a question, and I'm sure you want to go to the consolants and see if they have anything further.
Yeah, I'd actually like to go to the public, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask? Well, you know, I'll do it after the.
Yeah, because I would just respectfully say because of, I would not vote to close the public hearing. That would not be mine, and being that we need all four, I think answers your question.
Okay.
So, but I would like to go to the public, once they're done with their presentation, and see if anyone's here for the public to speak, and then we'll do to the professionals. But I just wanted to address your question as to, my feeling would be, there's still some things that we all need to be part of, including the public.
I don't disagree, but it's just if that's where it's going, let's get.
But there's still some stuff, there's still some things respective to the public.
Yeah, I think we'll hear from the public, but the comments are, I may ask you to reconsider that, Mr. Acting Chairman, only if the comments are consistent with what we've heard before, because we have been here for several months prior to our firm representing it, and we're certainly not pushing the board to consider any resolutions, but I think the communications that we've provided and the design of the building is pretty, it's very fully baked. Thank you.
Is anyone here from the public for this? Please step up, identify yourself, please use the mic. Please step up, identify yourself, please use the mic.
Thank you. I know you have a lot on your plate tonight. I do think there's some new information worth continuing the public...
Please identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, I'm Scott Lerman. I live on North Street in Beacon. I do think there is some new information. Thank you for the public education, as well as the board education. It made me think about what we just saw. The original rendering of the building was a much more elegant building. It had that kind of verticality of the windows. It had details which I liked. It was just gigantic compared to the building that's a historic building, so it was inappropriate to be there. But in comparison, where the building has gone has been squashed. It looks much more square in terms of its facade. It relies on a tree, which by the way, needs to be trimmed back, to hide it so that it won't disturb the facade of the historic building. It keeps retreating back inch by inch or foot by foot. You asked about could it get shorter? I think what many of us in the community are feeling is, if the character of the community is important, if the historic district character is important, if this particular historic building, which has stood proud for its history on that street, is important, I wish we were, and you said this before, Kevin, we were in a community where no one would have ever approached with an original plan to put a three-story building like that next to it. It wouldn't be simply fighting tooth and nail to get something there. This is much too important a historic resource for the city. It is such a minor site for building retail and for residential. I think we have better opportunities in the city for growth and for having even very large buildings, which I don't object to. So in general, I think that this building needs to go through either a genius redesign or it needs to be dropped. And the question I have, and this is, because I can't stay for every single one of these things, and you have a long enough meeting ahead of you, I still have fundamental questions that I'd like the board, the planning board, to discuss and think through, which is, how can you legislate better projects in design? How can you streamline this process but have better outcomes? You can have design guidelines. We know you can. I do it for a living in a different field. We know that you can have a community standard for the quality of buildings in the community. And the one issue that I ask as you start to think about this, and hopefully work with the city council to look at the legislation around the zoning, how we can strengthen your ability to get better outcomes, is how does character and quality of construction, how does character and quality of things particularly that are adjacent to historic and HLO buildings, how do we strengthen that? Because it's crazy that we're sitting here month after month, because this has gone on for a long time. Well, it's gone on for a long time because it never should have been brought to this committee. And how can you strengthen our comprehensive plan, which is coming up in 2027? How can you strengthen the rules and the board's ability to really help to guide this kind of development? I don't know what you're going to be able to do about this one project, but I'm concerned that we're even standing here talking about this project at all. One more observation, you'll see it later, someone has put some very square windows in one of the projects we're about to see, and this lady just told me we shouldn't do that. So I don't even know what guidance you can give, but you can, I understand, give design guidance when it affects the relationship to the neighborhood, and particularly to HDLOs. So I really urge you, and I hope you're going to push back against this, because I don't know anyone could design a building that would be appropriate in that spot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just stuck around. Teresa Kraft, I'm a Concerned resident of This is Beautiful City. What I took away from tonight's training video was hearing its presenter say, "Go forward with new design based on what is historically there," to take elements from the historic elements. I'm pretty sure she would support the public outcry of not allowing a modern addition to this historic telephone building. The proposed addition is intended to connect it to its freestanding historic building. I believe it will negatively impact the structure's historic character and integrity permanently. The assertion that it could be removed in the future stated at a previous meeting is ludicrous. The revised multi-design concepts in this proposed site plan still place a large building next to one of the most iconic freestanding structures on Main Street. This location will exasperate traffic in an already congested residential area, as it suggests an unrealistic overflow parking lot in the rear of the addition right next to homes. This parking area alone would lead to significant vehicle movement, noise, and nighttime lighting, which would permanently alter the character of our longstanding residential neighborhoods. Why has the quality of life for Beacon's residents been overlooked? Our tree city does not value trees, so I would not put much stock in that street tree to soften the blow of this proposed build. Just last week, we watched a healthy tree being cut down and removed on Main Street in a different section of, down the road. Nothing is permanent except a build that is out of place. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public here? Okay, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we've responded to these questions previously, both from the same presenters and speakers. With respect to it, I think the first comment, if I may, is direct, should be directed at the city council, who develops the legislation, both for historic district overlay and other criteria. The applicant has submitted full details of the projects and the application's compliance with each of those criteria, both for the CMS and the HLO. I also do have Mr. Bodendorf, who can speak to the parking discussion that was referenced this evening. So if I may, I'll turn it over to Mike to speak specifically to that.
Good evening. I just want to touch real quick on, we did update this parking analysis for this submission based on the new building layout. And we looked at parallel streets from DeWitt Street to Church Street, and we looked at perpendicular streets from Elm Street to Chestnut Street. Within 300 feet of the subject parcel, we're seeing anywhere from 65 available spaces to 118 available spaces during the day on those streets, and anywhere from 98 to 120 spaces on the streets during nighttime. So that's, you know, anywhere from a 4.3 to an eight times factor of the 15 spaces we need off-site. There's more spaces available within 500 feet of the subject parcel. 151 spaces to 176 at night, and 125 to 176 during the day. That doesn't include any of the municipal parking lots that we looked at, which is the Duchess County Government Center, Chestnut Street Lot, and Eliza Street Lot. Those are outside the 500-foot zone, so we didn't really consider those in our calculations within 300 feet and 500 feet, but it's just important to point out that those parking lots have any availability of anywhere from 65 spaces to about 116 spaces throughout the day.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Let's go to the professionals first, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Does that make you Pat Sajak?
Yeah.
So we just had a few comments. One, the renderings still not coordinated with the plans. The renderings are showing landscaping along the one side of the building. Plans aren't showing anything. There was some signs that need to be relocated in different areas for the proposed ADA parking. And then there was just some relabeling at this point for the engineering-wise.
So jumping in, kind of about the, I think the landscaping we were talking about is shown on that South Brett street facade. There's some plantings along that in the renderings that aren't shown on the site plan. I think to that same end, I just want to bring to board's attention that the earlier site plan versions included two new street trees. They were flowering dogwoods in planters along South Brett. Those, I think now that the open space landscaping requirement is being met on-site, I think the decision was made to remove those from the South Brett kind of sidewalk there. I just want to remind the board that the planning board may require, in this district specifically, the planning board does have the power, or the jurisdiction, I guess, to require plantings in the building transition zone with street trees spaced 30 to 40 feet is what the code recommends. So if the board requests that the trees be reinstated, I just wanted to note my previous comment, this does, this will kind of limit the pedestrian clearway. The code recommends eight feet of pedestrian clearway, putting the planters how they were previously shown at least. I think narrowed that sidewalk to 6.5 feet where the planters were specifically. So just kind of wanted to make the board aware of that trade-off. You do have the ability to request that these street trees be brought in. It will limit the sidewalk space slightly in some areas there. Elevations, I think we do have elevations, and hopefully this will maybe help with what's being shown and confirming what's being shown, as we will need the elevations to have kind of the dimensions and material callouts. And I think the applicant has noted in their submission that that will be in a previous and future submission. So I think that would help to kind of clarify, kind of to lens earlier comment about what are we seeing in the renderings, and we will go, you know, the approval will go by the elevation, so we just want to make sure that that's noted on the elevations. And then finally, for the lighting plan, I think I had asked for this previously, and I don't think it was added, so still just asking for a luminaire schedule, indicating the number, intensity, color, temperature, and CRI of each fixture. You have indicated, I think in your submission materials, that all the color temperature would be 2,700. If we can just have that on the plans in that lighting luminaire schedule, I think that's easier for everyone to reference and make sure that gets implemented. And then also on the lighting plan, a photometric summary to show there is an average foot candle level requirement of under one foot candle, so we need that to kind of be demonstrated on the plans as well.
Understood.
I mean, in terms of where we're at right now, if the applicant doesn't want us to close the public hearing, we should adjourn to the next hearing.
Yeah, I think we're looking...
Unless somebody has...
Yeah, we all look at one question. You may have questions. But not to set any resolution, just for further discussion with a fuller complement of the board, but at least that would have the benefit of closing the hearing, because the comments have remained consistent for the last few months with respect to the design changes, and the design really is pretty permanent.
I was, and I, of course, have a design question. And the question is...
Sorry, fresh out.
Is it, in terms of the size of the brick columns on either side of the facade, right now, I think the design intent...
And to be clear, I didn't mean the full, like these particular materials or color or things that could change. I meant more than size.
No, I'm talking about the width of the columns, and so right now, it seems like the, on the western side of facade, the thickness of the column is intended to sort of be a nod to, on the building itself. And my question is, what about modifying the design so that the addition is completely symmetrical unto itself, you know, in terms of between the glass partition and its western end?
No, I wouldn't do that just because it's, it is, you know, relating to the building. It's sort of pulling off the building, and if it was just symmetrical to itself, it wouldn't have that same relationship, so I don't think that that would be all that effective.
Okay. I think it looks, I think it's awkward, but that's just my take on it, but...
We'll look at it, but again, we'll take a look at it.
The only thing I would ask for prior to the next meeting is just bigger renderings with the subdivision.
Yeah. Bigger, I'm sorry?
Renderings with the subdivision.
Renderings, okay. I got it. Instead of the small, okay. Right, so sort of like standalone sheets of the renders.
And also, we can't approve this without an elevation, which is what the design is based upon.
No problem.
There isn't a straight elevation.
We'll get the straight elevation, and we'll get those full-size.
I'm not saying that, you know, that I'm gonna...
No, good points.
That'll make a difference for me, but yeah.
Great.
I think it's required.
So with that, we would ask, do you consider closing the hearing?
Yeah. That's interesting. Jennifer, you've mentioned an option. Could you repeat what you said, option of closing the hearing, or just...
Sure. The option that I discussed was, if the board did want to close the public hearing, you could do that without necessarily directing, you know, typically your next step would be a direct preparation of a resolution for your next meeting. You don't necessarily have to do that, considering there's only four board members here, and I think, at least I would need some direction from the board as far as what you want to see in the resolution. So what you could do is schedule this for a discussion at your next meeting instead of consideration of a resolution. You could also keep the public hearing open and do the same thing.
If we close the public hearing, we got 62 days unless they agree to an extension.
There's no subdivision here.
No, it's only for subdivision.
Yep.
Oh, all right. But then I think the only real impact is whether they can put significant additional information on the record.
And if the public hasn't been able to respond.
Right.
So...
And I would, I mean, as somebody who's pushing that, I think this would work better if the facade was, you know, more of its own thing. I don't, I'm not saying take away the brick panel detail or the height of the windows, but as someone who's, who I think, now that we've obtained more separation from the historic building, I think shedding that asymmetry in the addition and trying to make it a little bit more elegant on its own is better, and maybe it's worth keeping the public hearing open if the applicant considers that and maybe tweaks the design a little bit.
But if I may, those are comments that are part of the public hearing, so if we address those, those will be incorporated, but these are all referenced in the hearing already, so we have that information. So that putting a response to that or changing the design to reflect that would just be in response to that, not for continued hearing. So that's part of the record. And if I may, the comments consistently have been from the same speakers, which is, we appreciate the feedback and the input, but the comments haven't changed in relationship to what we're designing.
But should anything slightly change in the design? You may have other comments.
If it changes, if the design changes to something that is different than what was discussed tonight or at any other public hearing meeting, then we should leave the public hearing open. But if the applicant is responding to comments and those design changes are responsive to those comments, that's appropriate for them to submit after the close of a public hearing.
Right.
I think it seems like, the sense I'm getting is that the board tonight would be more comfortable keeping the public hearing open, and that is fine. I think the likelihood of the applicant coming back with some sort of design change that has never been discussed or never been alluded to during any of these meetings is very low.
I can confirm that.
And even so, it changes from the last meeting, but now, I mean, there are, changes are getting smaller.
Yeah. But if the board is more comfortable keeping the public hearing open, that is...
Right, and we're not asking the board to set a resolution or anything. We're just, I think, keeping, closing the hearing and moving that discussion to discuss those things that have been identified, expanded upon, and worked into the design of the building to work towards some resolution.
Let's, since there is trepidation, why don't we just keep it open and move on if there's nothing else to work on?
I would schedule... The one thing is, why are we keeping it open?
Right.
Like, what's changing here? They're gonna drop it down another six inches?
Do you have a valid point that what could change?
And they could always reopen the hearing. I mean, this has been on for nine different meetings, and it's been on for a long time, and the building design has changed, and I'm indicating that the building design can change for brick or other, but the size, scale, it's as small as it can feasibly get to be developed, or won't get developed, and then there could be changes that could impact permanently the telephone building itself to keep it afloat. So these are all realities of these projects, and why the HLO exists, is to be able to maintain properties like this. This property, this project will help maintain the telephone building through its future stewards, including the current property owner who's maintained it and made it that way. That's what the HLO is for, in part, and also design standards and to ensure all the things that we've done through this project, but the project is really, it's fully baked.
I mean, closing the public hearing, at least from my perspective, if it's gonna prejudice anyone, it's gonna be prejudicing the applicant, because it's gonna be limiting their ability to make changes, which they're saying they don't want to make. So it seems to me like if they want to close the public hearing, it's their application. I mean, we've heard from the public. It has been on for nine meetings.
I will say, I do think it's an appropriate time to close the public hearing. However, it is within your discretion to keep it open. There's no hard and fast rule one way or another, but for the reasons David mentioned, in fact that we're getting a lot of the same comments, it would be an appropriate time to close it.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Not forcing, just-
Yeah, no, I'm just kind of mulling, you know, I'm just trying to mull over the pros and cons, but, um, we can reopen it if we need to, right? I'll second the, the motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. See you next month.
Moving on to item number two. Oops, sorry. Continued public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval mixed use commercial and residential, 300 Main Street submitted by 300 Main Street LLC.
It's gonna be a repeat theme here, Mr. Acting Chairman. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the applicant. I am joined by our project architect, R.A. Siegel, as well as our project engineer, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. As you mentioned, Acting Chairman, the board, we are here for a continued public hearing on our site plan application proposing to construct a new three-story mixed-use commercial and residential building at the property. The public hearing was opened back at your July 8th meeting, at which time we did provide a detailed background about the project, which will include five separate commercial retail spaces alongside a pedestrian-oriented retail arcade walkway on the first floor of the building and eight residential apartments located above. At the July meeting, the board also adopted a negative declaration in accordance, completing the secret process. As we detailed in our July 29th submission, the architecture and visual character of the building has been further refined to respond to public comments. If I may, specifically, the proposed wall sconces have been replaced with a modern-looking sconces, and additional revised lighting details have been incorporated into our plans. The cornice at the top of the Oriole window has also been modified to further define that feature and echo the building cornice details. In response to public comments that were regarding the delivery vehicle traffic on Main Street in vicinity to the property, a striped, signed "No Parking and Loading Zone" has been proposed along the Main Street frontage to accommodate those deliveries, which kind of already happened in that area. In further response to the board in public, the proposed trash enclosure has been shifted away from the rear lot lines, I understand those neighbors may actually be moving, but there wasn't change for the future residents, and will be separated from the rear lot lines by a line of trees within a landscaped buffer area. In addition, singular long trash enclosure was replaced with eight separate smaller enclosures, each of which is enclosed on all sides. The rear courtyard has been modified to include some landscaping along all property lines, which did increase, revolted an increase in the landscaped area for the property and a larger patio area within the courtyard. Lastly, but not leastly, the proposed shadow box fence has been modified to a solid privacy fence, and retaining walls been provided along the rear of the property. With that, as the hearing is open, I think R.A.'s got the visuals up there, but we'll certainly defer the board to turn it to the public or any comments you might have.
Let's just go to the public real quick, is anyone here from the public for this?
Teresa Kraft, Still a Concern resident. Unfortunately, we are up against the same lawyer and architect in these public hearings. Unfortunately, they don't want to continue to hear from the public, yet their projects go on for so long because they choose poor designs, and it's been this planning board that keeps pushing them back to the drawing board to design better. I urge this planning board to reconsider this new 300 Main Street proposed massive development project planned to be squeezed in sideways as we face increasing congestion along the thoroughfare. It becomes more challenging to envision a sustainable future for our community. It is disheartening to see our historically significant city transformed into a more chaotic environment. The proposed mixed-use commercial and residential development will impact the quality of life for homeowners and all residents, especially those in the surrounding areas, mostly families living on North Chestnut and North Cedar. The introduction of a retail outlet and eight two-bedroom apartments may lead to significant noise and activity, which would affect the daily lives of those nearby. I appeal to your commitment to this board and your sense of community and your compassion for the residents of Beacon, your neighbors. Unlike Huddy and Federer's lawyers' remarks tonight during previous public hearings, many residents are advocating for the establishment of a separate landmark preservation committee and rewriting the comprehensive plan ASAP. I hope that as members of this planning board, you will support this request and push the city council to get that ball rolling, along with acknowledging the importance of preserving the unique character of this industrial and historic city. Thank you. Nobody listens.
Anybody else here from the public?
Joanna Neville, I live at 304 Main Street.
Please step to closer to the mic. Thank you.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Joanna Neville, I live at 304 Main Street. I'm just concerned about the 10 windows facing this new building plan that I have, getting to them if work does need to be done on my building, which is vinyl, and I have three windows that are ground level against what they want to do, so is it just, I'm, I'm gonna be blocked in with planters, there's no more sunlight, I, I'm concerned about that. And the three stories, it's pretty tall, it's gonna block out a lot of my light, so please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, please.
Hi, this is Becky Eaton from 10 North Cedar Street. I just wanted to clarify about the refuse, the redesign, how there's like the row of the trash enclosures. I'm feeling like that doesn't, spreading out the trash just in a line against the fence doesn't really address my previous concerns about pests, odors, noise of people being out there, so that's just something I wanted to continue to discuss. And then, my other question was, how tall are the trees going to be that are planted along that fence and where the trash is, the proposed trash location is? They could be mature trees, that would be preferred, so just to add another privacy barrier. And just like Joanna, there will also be a lot of windows now facing my property, so if, if there's any way to address privacy concerns, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for the public? Okay, if you wanna address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll have R.A. kind of speak up to some of the plantings and some of the discussions there, but more so the concern. I think R.A. had the initial site plan or the existing site plan. One of the features of this project, of course, is closing off a driveway off of Main Street. That was a part of the, the development plan to help create that arcade, so that's designed into the, the system, but R.A., why don't you come speak to the separation with the adjoining property and request in respect to their, the windows and how this project is preserving the light through the creation of this arcade that will also include planting throughout. And then additionally, there was mention tonight about additional tree heights, which I think we can definitely look at as far as installation in the rear, but R.A. can also speak to the types of enclosures and why that distinguishes a larger receptacle.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that we, we moved the trash away from the fence and then put, you know, landscaping between the back of the trash and the fence so that there's four, I think it's four or five feet there. Previously, it was up against the fence, so in response to the neighbors' concern, we pulled it away and, and added landscaping there, so just wanted to clarify that. And then with, with 304 Main Street, the, we don't have any solid building up against the location where they have windows, it would just be, you know, low planters and the applicant wanted, you know, roses climbing up there on, on a trellis, so that, I mean, there shouldn't really be interference with any of those existing windows.
Okay, thank you, thank R.A. Let's start with the-
I just, I guess I have a few questions on that. Can you, maybe it would be helpful to zoom in to some of the lattice planter details and kind of walk us through that in more detail, because this question keeps coming up, so I think we could respond to it more thoroughly. And then I think, I'm seeing a retaining wall and shadow box fence detail, but I thought I heard you say that we are removing the shadow box and we're doing a solid fence, or did I mishear that?
It's just a privacy fence, but I'll have R.A., why don't you bring your computer right?
And then maybe for the landscaping in the back, I think there was a comment, and I know trees are often planted at a smaller scale so that they actually grow, because if you plant them too mature, they don't survive, but there is higher levels, I think as we've had, heard from Karen multiple times, like you can do slightly larger caliper shrubs so that they're not just little, little guys, so maybe walking us through that would be helpful, too. And that kind of gets, I think I didn't have any remaining comments, because I think, I talked to the building inspector about what's required for maintenance of 304, but I think it'd be helpful to have the applicant kind of walk us through that a little bit more detailed.
Yes, so I have that parian back enlarged there, so you can see how the, those enclosures are, you know, pulled away from the back fence. The, the thing with the fence is we want to keep that horizontal, you know, shadow box design, but we're putting a solid panel, you know, where there's interface with the neighbors, so it, it's gonna be solid as opposed to that sort of more open-air shadow box idea.
Okay, so it, it will be, I'm just trying to pair this with the, with the detail that we're seeing right next to the site plan, which is showing, so it's showing shadow box, but then I hear solid, is that the same, I think I'm hearing the two terms, so?
Yeah, it's, it's a shadow box design, you know, with those-
Got it.
Alternating horizontal, but-
But you're not gonna have gaps in it, it's gonna be, so it's gonna be shadow box still, but it will be solid.
Right.
Got it. And that's in the rear on top of that retaining wall?
Right.
And then on the side facing 304?
Hold on, this thing is a little slow.
I know. It's acting up.
Yeah, so, so on the side, you can see that there's like a low planter box and, and then a trellis that, you know, just has pretty, pretty open elements.
And that's the majority of the property line, so if you go to the site plan, you're showing there's only two bits of solid wall up against that property line, right? That is-
Yeah, right, right in the front and then in the back.
And then, sorry, so the fence with the trellis kind of along it, the heights of that are?
Uh, it's like a six-foot-high, you know, fence, and then there's a little open part above that, so-
So there, there will be a fence, the full, kind of almost full first story?
Right.
So those ground floor windows will now be looking at a, a fence with rose bush, with a trellis, right?
Yeah, it's like a decorative trellis.
But the upper stories are going to be facing onto your open retail plaza.
Right.
And I don't know for the building inspector, I think we had talked about, I, there was concerns about maintenance of, of the, of the building and what's required, I don't know if there's-
Yeah, there's, let me try to zoom in on there again.
Yeah, and I, R.A., when you're zooming in there, I think, maybe you could point out, I think you, you show exactly where the windows are on-
Yeah.
The adjacent property.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna show the space that there's, there's like a two, almost two and a half foot space between the neighboring building and the property line, which is still gonna be there, so, you know, there, there's room for some maintenance in, in there. And then this also shows the existing windows, you know, beyond the building that's up against the property line. There's, there's two here and then there's one here, but, but those are all further back.
Okay, that's helpful. So yeah, I, I think my, my comments, my previous comments had been addressed, I think I, I was focused on that gap between 304 and 300 Main Street, and so I think we've kind of addressed it from the front facade in that there is going to be some kind of enclosure there so that it's not, I think we see sometimes on Main Street, if those areas are left open, they fill up with trash and refuse and stuff, so it is kind of blocked from the sidewalk perspective, and then I think, you know, what I'm hearing is, in part of this urban development, that there is by code the required amount of space between these two buildings, there's nothing preventing this building from being that close to 304. I think there will just have to be discussions about maintenance, that maybe it won't be a ladder, it will have to be through windows or through-
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question, because it's like 27 inches, right, between the, the two buildings?
2.3 feet, I think it is, so yeah, a little, about that, close to.
Yeah, and that's, that's a tight, like, that's a tight squeeze to, you know, to re-point to repair siding or, you know, just to, I'm just curious what people think about that.
Well, do they have any, does the neighbor have an easement to cross onto the neighbor property?
They don't have the right to go onto 300 Main to, to maintain those windows without an easement, so unless there's a, you know, willingness to negotiate an easement, there would be no right for 304 to enter 300.
They can't do any of that, so. What happens when somebody's built right onto their line? You know, so if somebody owns a building that's built right on the property line?
I remember something about step-
How do they access, how do they maintain their?
There, there's something on the RPATL about getting access in that situation. Remembering this, I'm studying for the bar exam 20 years ago, literally, there is some provision of law to get around that, but I think you gotta file a proceeding.
And what's the rate of the, you know, so if you, if you own a building that's on a line and somebody wants to develop the lot next to you, what is the minimum?
There is none.
Well, yeah, and I think the, the other point is that there are, are alternative means other than a ladder, or-
Right, through the building, you could, the building could have been setback from, their building could have been setback further from the property line, too, to ensure access.
Of course, but is there, you know what I'm saying, like now, it's an existing condition, so.
And it could be demolished and turned into a three-story building as well. Again, these are all real points.
Not really constructive, though, I mean, in terms of just trying to deal with the existing-
But we've designed, the point is we've designed the project to ensure that there is air, open air into those spaces, they're not being blocked, we're not proposing a party wall to do that, and we're trying to help elevate and, and again, ensure or benefit those visual, you know, whether it's first floor or second floor.
And I'm just, again, just a question of rare notification, so if an adjacent developer says, I want to do, I want to, you know, connect to the building with a party wall, does the existing owner have a, you know, can they basically say no?
They don't have a property-based entitlement. All right, for what it's worth, we're going completely off the-
No, I know, I'm just curious, but it'll come up at some point.
For at least five years, at several points in time, I've suggested that the city consider adopting legislation to address the issue of vertical air rights, like has been done in New York City. It hasn't happened, it's the Wild West here, here we are.
Okay, thanks.
Back to you, Chuck.
Basically, the comments I have at this time deal with the construction cost estimate they submitted for development performance bond, so we'll be looking to get an updated estimate for that. That's it.
Okay, let's go around the board real quick. David?
Personally, I like this project. I think it's been done tastefully, but there's still some small things to work out here, but I think it's a good use of the space.
David?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the amount of design work that's been done. It's, so, it's, it shows that people are capable of better design than we've seen in some cases. I'll put it as nicely as I can in a way, so I appreciate that.
You can give him a gold star.
Yeah, that's, in any case, I have one suggestion, which is that there are four windows by the courtyard of the existing public house, the, the bar that's next door, that are gonna be adjacent to what could be a, a loud space at times, and I think that you might consider using triple glazing, which is used in a lot of situations like that, for those four windows to prevent those tenants from being unhappy the whole time.
Lynn?
No, no questions, thanks.
Scott, anybody else in the public have anything else to say regarding this application? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion? Motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
Give me one second, does the applicant want to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, all right, second.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, motion, David seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the only other ask I might have of you, Acting Chairman, is whether the board might consider, in this instance, suggesting or authorizing your attorney to draft a resolution for consideration in September?
Can I just do that?
Aye.
Don't say why not. Let's have a motion.
Motion to draft a resolution?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm seconded.
I'm seconded.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three. Welcome back.
Welcome back, Mr. Chairman.
Public hearing-
Oops. I'll have to do your intro first.
Yeah. Public hearing and continued review of application for- Yeah. Public hearing and continued review of application for site plan approval residential four-unit multifamily dwelling, 14 North Cedar Street, submitted by Severon and Perucci-
Perucci.
Perucci, thank you. Realty.
I'm not going to say it again. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Taylor Palmer-
Before we start, we just need a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing? Have a motion to open the public hearing.
Uh, motion to open the public hearing?
And a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Now, I'll say it for the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight I am joined by R.A. Siegel, the architect, as well, our traffic consultant on this project is Rich D. Andrea, and then our project engineer happens to also be the property owner, Angelo Perucci. So I said I wouldn't say it again, but I did say it again. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we are before you this evening for our public hearing on the application for a proposal to construct a new two-story, four-unit multifamily dwelling at the property, along with associated site improvements, including a parking area. Before I turn to R.A., just to review the refined proposal, as this is the public hearing, if I may, let me first start with a little bit about the property, which is located at the intersection of North Cedar, coming a little bit further from where we just were on the last application, and Church Street, which property here is classified in the T or Transitional zoning district. As we detailed in our planning board submissions, the new building will include a parking area consisting of five off-street parking spaces with 188 compliant parking space. The applicant is now proposing curbing and sidewalks along North Cedar and Church Streets and within the property, as well as fencing, pole-mounted and building-mounted exterior lighting, and site landscaping. Since we were last before you in July, in response to comments from the board regarding the ingress and egress in particular to the property, that has been reversed, such that all vehicles will enter the property now via a one-way entrance from Church Street, and then they'll exit the property on the one-way exit on North Cedar Street. And that was to ensure there weren't certain conflicts or effectively only one way to go. As noted in our traffic and parking assessment, that was prepared by Collier's Engineering Design, we did have this access configuration will ensure that the traffic from the project will not be required to travel along Main Street to reach the property. And then that property, excuse me, the project will have little or no impact on that Main Street vehicular traffic or pedestrian traffic movements. The site plans have also been updated since that time. As follows, the curb cut on North Cedar has been narrowed to 15 feet in lieu of a previously proposed 24-foot curb cut. So we reduced the size of that. We did update our landscaping plan into the plans, including a diverse mixture of trees, shrubs, and grasses with a garden bench situated in the rear of the proposed multifamily dwelling. And then we did also include a snow storage location on the plans. A photo realistic rendering has been included, as well as elevation details. And then we did refine the traffic signage, lighting, and utility and grading plans, and the erosion control have been added. So for the public considerations, public project has been significantly refined since its inception. Were originally proposed first just adjusting the building configuration, but we did shift from what was originally considered a modular design to what I'll call an R.A. beacon design that incorporates the L shape that you now see before you, with, as well as this horizontal siding in place of the vertical board and batten that have been shown. And that's been further refined as well. And I'll have R.A. just quickly show the visuals for the benefit of the public. And just for the record, we had a chance to review the draft negative declaration that's before you all, and we do not have any comments in that regard.
Taylor took my talking points again. The, the only thing that he didn't mention was that, that we also did, you know, based on the comments that we got, look at the trim details on the roofs and, you know, modify those to get, get a little bit better detail and more traditional detailing to match the neighborhood. But, yeah, basically, Taylor picked up the other points.
Does anybody from the public hear for this application?
Teresa Kraft, I've been watching this since its inception, and they finally brought on the architect and the same law firm. This design has gone back to the drawing board multiple times for improvement. Finally, that vision has come to fruition, and it blends in with the surrounding residential neighborhood. Nice, carry on. Thank you.
Don't lose it.
Hi, Declan Costello. I live two streets over. I've drive past that lot probably every single day, and I actually think this is going to be a great upgrade for that lot. That, that's all.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. My name's Shane Green. I just wanted to say I'm in favor of the project at 14 North Cedar Street. The building fit, fit, design fits nicely into the neighborhood without being too large or disruptive. I think it's a really smart design, and I think it's a positive addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need that address for him?
My name is Tom Hoyt. I live at 15 North-
Speak into the mic, please. Thank you.
Tom Hoyt, I live at 15 North Cedar Street, so I hate to rain on everybody's parade, but I'm not too thrilled about this across the street. It's looking right in my bedroom window. And it says, how does it fit with character? Well, actually, it looks better than I expected it would. I thought it was going to be a big, ugly thing. So, but I'm afraid I have to say I'm not, I'm opposed.
Shane, what, the last speaker before you, what was your address? Because you didn't, you gave your name, but you didn't say your address. Yes, yes.
Eighteen Pocket.
Please, just to the mic and just say it if you don't mind, so we have it on the record.
Eighteen Pocket Road.
Okay, thank you very much.
What was the name of the street? I'm sorry, Eighteen Pocket.
Thank you. Somebody else who's about to stand up before I stop.
Hi, this is Becky Eaton, 10 North Cedar. I'm next door to 14 North Cedar. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if this plan still calls for it, but I believe on one of the plans it said the fence that's along my driveway would be removed as part of the building process. I just wanted to put it on record that that fence is actually my property and should stay. That's an easy thing to fix. Just don't tear the fence down. And then similar question as the 300 Main Street question. I know there, there will be plants along their fence, which is along my driveway, and I just wanted to see if there could be mature plantings there as well, just for a little more privacy. And the, I want to be sure to bring up the driveway. Right now, the driveway exit is on North Cedar, correct? And entrances on Church? That's right, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I agree that this is going to look better than what's there right now, for sure. But I am concerned about the traffic. There's already well-documented traffic issues, trucks double parking, high school, middle school, and Kumon students walk along that street all the time. And I just, I don't know if there's a way that the entrance and exit can be on Church, or if that's not even a possibility. But I, I really encourage someone to stand on that corner all day, and you'll see what I'm talking about. It's surprisingly busy. And this, I'm sure is not, I don't know, but I know at the last meeting, one of the consultants asked if it's an option to move some of the trees. There's those cherry blossoms on the corner that are pretty much the cornerstone of that, of our little neighborhood. And it would be a real shame to lose those. I know they're very big, but they're beautiful. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay, let's go around.
Yep, so I can start. So with regards to the architectural elevations, I said this last month, but I think the revised elevations do reflect a thoughtful improvement on the prior submission, showing kind of more contextual and balanced building form that aligns better with the surrounding neighborhood. I just had a few minor comments on those kind of final details that can sometimes be forgotten, but I think are important to make sure that everything still remains cohesive. So right now, we're not seeing, I don't believe, railings along, there's an ADA ramp access to this that I believe will have to have railings on it. And then we're not really sure, it's not really indicating in the materials what those are, whether they'll be decorative metal, or wood, or standard pipe. So that detail should be provided along with the elevations. The elevations indicate painted per owner selection. I know some planning board members don't have strong feelings about paint color, but we are seeing a certain paint color here. So it is traditional for that to be indicated, that this is what we're proposing and this is what we will paint. So if we could just get a sample of, of what that, and it could be a range of colors, maybe X, Y, Z, or something similar, but just letting us know what the intent is there. Lighting plan, I asked for this last time, and I think, just to make sure we're seeing the ISO lines correctly, they're not labeled. So those could be labeled on the lighting plan. And then the street tree, that was my comment. There are three of the four existing trees appear to be in good health and could be preserved as desirable streetscape elements. These trees, some of these trees are located within proposed landscape areas, which may facilitate their retention. So I think the applicant had responded in their materials that they were going to coordinate with the project landscape designer. So just kind of wanted to follow up on that, on where that landed. And those are my comments.
Thank you.
So I'll just touch on a few that Natalie didn't touch on. But one question I have, Mrs. Eaton, you had noted that the fence line on the one side was, Mrs. Eaton had noticed that the fence line was on her property there, but yet it's showing on your property. I know it is stated to be removed, but I think that needs to be looked at between your property owner-
Yeah, I think we can, even if there were a better fence or a different fence, I don't think we have, we would certainly be objectionable to that, as we typically are for landscaping as well, which, which will be part of R.A.'s comments, but thank you, yes, we'll, we'll address.
Okay. And I know the fence details showed it being six foot. You're crossing into a front yard. It's going to be dropped to four feet in that front yard area. As far as regards to lighting, on the lighting plan, you have some luminaires that are labeled as L2, but on the plan it calls out L1. I think that's just mislabeling on that part. The planting schedule should be updated. It should include the number of plants, size of the trees, right, so on and so forth. And then there was some corrective information required on the details itself.
Did you want to address it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, give me one sec, I'll, I'll speak specifically. And then we'll also, we are going to be supplementing this with some just additional, I think, specifics. But R.A. is going to talk about the trees and Deborah Adamson's landscape work on this.
Yeah, so we are, we are going to keep those three existing trees in, in the landscaped area. So those are incorporated and they will remain. In terms of the fence, John, we have to do that on both streets, right, because it's considered-
Front yard, yeah. It's two front yards, correct.
We'll take care of that.
You may want to just stop at the front yard line since you're that close. I mean, you're within several feet of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
So either drop it down to four or just terminate it, and you've got landscaping proposed.
Right, okay. And then, and then in terms of the fence, along with the neighbor, we were planning on creating a privacy fence. If there's one there, we can look at, you know, you know, leaving that, or if there's no reason to replace it, then we can probably do that.
Right, well, I, the reason I raised the question is, you know, the neighbor got up and was concerned about the removal, but your plans are showing that that fence line is on your property, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check the survey and just make sure it's shown in the right spot. Yeah, I think that's it. And, and as we were saying, the landscape plan is now developed, and we'll get that schedule on there so we can see the sizes. And then I'll also speak to the landscaper about having, you know, a little bit more mature plantings against that property line.
All right, did I hear you correctly that you're not proposing to remove the trees? Will there be any tree removal on the site?
I, I think one of them is coming out that, and I don't know if that was a tree health issue or some, or something else, but three out of the four are going to stay.
Can you update the plans? Because they definitely says they're all coming out right now.
Yeah.
And then as far as labeling a snow storage area, I didn't see anything on the-
Oh, yeah, I may have to transfer that onto the site plan. I think it was on the engineering plan.
That's a job?
Yeah.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
No other questions.
Do you have a neg deck?
Yeah.
We do, yeah. So at your last meeting, you directed preparation of a secret neg declaration, which we provided to the board. You have the full EAF Part Two that's been completed, and also the Part Three with the narrative attachment that goes through each of the environmental impact categories. I'll just mention, I made a quick change here on the fly tonight, based on the tree removal. So the property does hit for the possible presence of Indiana bat. So any tree removal would have to be restricted to the, the winter months. So I just updated the, the neg deck to indicate that there's at least one tree that's proposed to be removed, that one tree.
Can't do it during that time.
Will have to be removed during the winter months to protect for the Indiana bat. Otherwise, the neg deck is pretty standard for this kind of infill residential development that we've seen elsewhere in the city. I don't think there's anything else of particular note. It does address lighting. It addresses traffic. This property is not within any historic district. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Motion to-
Motion to adopt the negative secret declaration as amended.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I have a motion to authorize the draft? Okay, one second. A motion to close hearing.
Do they, do you want?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And now, have a motion to authorize the drafting of a resolution for next week's meeting, I mean, next month's meeting.
A draft resolution approving the site, proposed site plan, like, motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Should we be, that's it, sorry.
And-
I think that's everything.
Can we close the public?
We, we close it?
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on.
Sorry, just, just to clarify, the applicant is going to address in the next submission the comments that came up today.
Yes.
Item number four, public hearing, continued review of application for site plan approval residential, convert existing single-family residence to two-family residence, Six Cliff Street, submitted by Fadil and Lindita Mahar, Mah, Maha? Okay. I'm sorry for mispronouncing.
No, not at all.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Taylor Palmer, on behalf of the applicant, joined by R.A. Siegel, our architect, and our project engineer, Mike Bodendorf. As you mentioned, we are here before you for our application for site plan approval, proposing to convert the existing single-family dwelling at Six Cliff Street to a two-family dwelling. Before I do turn it over to R.A., just to walk through the updates to those site plans for the benefit of the public in attendance this evening. And we did vote to open the public hearing?
I was just going to mention that, yeah. Sorry, I was finishing up my notes from the last one.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Me, David.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll push to incorporate those comments lead in here. But just with that, for the benefit of the public in attendance tonight, I will give you a brief summary to the application, and then the changes that have been made since that time, based on your comments at the July meeting. As noted, the applicant is proposing to convert the existing, existing residential building into a two-family home. The .6 acre parcel is located on the east side of Cliff Street and classified in the T District. It's presently developed with an existing one-story and partial two-story residential building and a single-story detached garage in the rear, along with paved driveways on the north and south entrances to the building. The area surrounding the property includes a mix of residential, commercial, institutional uses located within the T District and the CMS District and the HDLO. The abiding property at Eight Cliff Street is also classified in the T District and is presently developed with a two-family residence. The property to the north contains the city's Cliff Street parking lot, which is classified in the CMS and the HDLO. And then the property to the east, which is adjacent to the rear of the property, where this- this addition, because this is just an addition to the existing single-family residence, which previously received variance relief from the zoning board, is also classified in the CMS and HDLO districts. The two-family use is a permitted as-of-right use in the T District. The existing single-family dwelling already has two kitchens, so to convert the existing two-family dwelling, the applicant is proposing to do this addition on the building, consisting of a new kitchen and living room space. RIA will show on the plans in just a minute, but part of the addition will also be located above the existing one-story portion of the building, and part of the addition will comprise two stories attached to the rear of the existing building. The addition is located near the rear of the building, and really will be minimally visible. The application is also, excuse me, the applicant is also proposing to reconfigure the first floor of the building, to convert it into independent dwelling unit, and then to install a partial new deck on the first floor level, and to install staircase at the second floor connecting to the proposed roof deck atop that building. The applicant is also proposing certain repairs and replacements to the building itself, to remedy deteriorated conditions of the existing facility at 6 Cliff Street, and they attempt to hopefully enhance the overall aesthetic experience. So in addition to the more fully detailed in our July 29 supplemental submissions to your board, we did provide some additional details to clarify those design changes. That information has been added to the plans in relation to the brick corners, and the window, and door openings on the plan. The cornice has been identified as a painted aluminum gutter with cellular PVC molding trim, I got the word modular stuck in my head. The existing downspouts on the residence will be replaced with painted aluminum downspouts, which will tie into the existing storm drain for the property. In addition, certain components were added or clarified on the site plan. New locations for the parking areas, bless you-
Thank you.
-will remain and are now identified on the plans. The applicant intends to continue these parking areas, and will clean them up by reshaping and repaving with concrete pavers. A new refuse enclosure has been incorporated. A concrete paver walkway is now proposed to the side of the residence, connecting the existing driveway to the refuse enclosures and the stairway. And then additional trees and shrubs are proposed to be planted on the property for a total of seven trees along the southern lot line, which will provide screening for the refuse enclosure, and shrubs will be located along the concrete paver near the refuse enclosure. Finally, I will note that Hudson Land Design did perform an infiltration investigation, or INI, investigation, and they did not find any INI present. Procedurally, this is a Type 2 action under SEAKER, and as I mentioned previously, the applicant did previously appear at the zoning board in connection with a setback variance specific to the new addition. So with that, I'll have RIA just walk briefly through the plans.
Yes, so the basic things that we changed, you know, between the last meeting and now, the board asked us to look at the trim detail and the gutter, so we got further into that detail, because all the way around the building. We also, instead of just like concrete in the driveway, and below the trash enclosure, and leading up to the entrance, we're using, you know, the individual concrete pavers, just like a step up from the plain concrete. And then we are using just trash enclosure, that's like a product, we're keeping it away from the property line fence, again, to help out with keeping that, you know, away from the neighbors, and then added more landscaping between this house and the neighbors.
Is anyone here from the public for this application?
This is way better than TV, but it might be over early tonight. This is a one-off, converting this existing single-family build into a two-family resident concept is one I can get behind. The design marries with other surrounding brick buildings on Cliff Street, especially the industrial-age brick building built in 1870, and a new rebuild at 5 Cliff Street. If the neighboring residents support it, I do too. However, going forward, I do not want this to set a precedent. I, like many others, do not want to see every single-family home converted into multifamily residence, and every green space and beacon developed, just because it can, does not mean it should. And tonight, you and the public sat through four public hearings, all submitted by the same law firm and architect, yet, no jokes by Taylor, the night is young.
This is like TV.
A local Beacon resident refers to it as the Planning Corps channel. Coming attractions.
So, one minor comment that I'll start with, and I just, this is more of like a confirmation of the site plan, is I was looking at the site, and it looks like there is a lot of like, material, broken, kind of concrete, old paving stuff. So we're showing a lot of green on the site plan, that isn't labeled as seeded and grassed. I'm assuming that's what it was, but just for clarification, there was like, is the intent for everywhere that's green, for if there's broken concrete and stuff there, for that to be removed, and for this to become fully permeable? So that was a point of clarification. The other aspect, I will caveat this, with there's not strong language to encourage this in the code, but I'm channeling my predecessor, John Clark, and you know what I'm going to say. There are two existing driveways on this property, and therefore two existing curb cuts that lead to more turning vehicles, and more dangerous aspects for pedestrians, as well as less on-street parking. So my one comment was, right now, I think the proposed parking is to retain both driveways, have one vehicle parked on either side of the building. If there was any way to consolidate that, so that parking vehicles could be pulling into just one area, since we're only proposing two parking spaces here, if that could be consolidated in any way, that was just a question. But again, I don't think there's language in the code to mandate it, it was just out there as planning practice.
So RIA can speak to, I think, the planting piece of it, and then access to the garage.
Yeah, the green planting is definitely new.
It's going to be seeded in-
Yeah, and we'll note that on the plan. We did look at trying to consolidate the parking, and you know, try to get it on the left side. There's a couple of things, I mean, first, it's very thin, I think there's like seven and a half feet there.
Yeah.
So it'd be tough to maneuver very well. The bigger problem is that, because it's two-family setup-
Stacked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if it's one family, and you have that stacking, you can go grab the keys, but if it's two separate families, it's hard to-
Coordinate.
To do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
John?
I have no comments, let's go around the board.
I really don't have comments on this one.
Kevin?
Yeah, I hate the two driveway. We should always try to get, reduce the amount of curb cuts, and the amount, because we're losing so much street parking in general. I understand the issue, and I thought that there was a restriction on parking in the front of buildings. I thought there was a restriction to, that-
And these are existing, these are existing conditions, we're not changing anything by this application, these are existing conditions. This is where, these are existing curb cuts, we're not proposing to change them. If anything, we're reducing how much imperious there is, and-
Well, you're paving, you're repaving, you're-
Right, we're fixing up an existing condition. And we've had to discuss, just if I may, for the benefit of the board, we had discussions with the neighbors at 8 Cliff Street, at the Zoning Board of Appeals, about this whole corridor and the section of the property. They were very specific about the fencing, and that whole lot line, so it's a very, there's a lot of deliberation there, as it related to the setback, which is closest to 8 Cliff. So we had an extensive discussion with them as well about the project.
No questions or comments, thanks.
So anybody here from the public, I'm just, one last time, but-
Teresa Crapp, Liberty Street, I'm sorry.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think we're at this point, do you think for us, sorry, let me see, so?
I don't think there's anything else to do.
Direct resolution.
Yeah, I was going to direct for a motion to direct a resolution for next meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need any official, I mean, to Kevin's point, do we need anything official on the existing location of parking? Should that be clarified? Because there is language in the code, right, that it should not be in front of the building.
Yeah, I mean, unless Brian disagrees, and you can look into this, but my understanding is that it's pre-existing non-conforming, and would be allowed to continue, to the extent that there's parking spaces proposed in front of the building. It looks like, I'm having a hard time seeing it from here, maybe I need to get my prescription checked, but it looks like the front of the building, it looks like there's cars that can fit behind the front plane of the building, so I'm not even sure that cars would be parked in front of the front plane of the building.
Well, in the second one, it's just, that's about the size of a car, to the one to the left.
To the left.
I mean, we could move that back slightly, and then you'd be further behind the plane, but these are existing conditions.
Yeah, these are existing conditions, and what, do we really want to tell them we need less parking around here?
I mean, no, I just want to, you know, make people aware of the fact that there's a code requirement for parking locations, and this is existing non-compliant, and I think it's something we should-
Good distinction.
Try to make more consistent, and so for consistent streetscape.
No, it's a fair point, I think.
Yeah.
On this one, I'd say leave one off alone, but, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, continued review of application of site plan approval and special use permit, hotel and restaurant, 1064 Walcott Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Taylor Palmer, on behalf of the applicants, I am joined by RIA Siegel, as well as Justin Dates of Colliers Engi-
We skipped to 45.
Oh, I thought you said 45 Beakman, yeah.
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
Well, I can tell you, 1064 Walcott, and we'll be, we're going to request to adjourn, as well as 193, 195, to the extent anyone's here for those applications. We will be adjourning 193, 95, and we'll also be adjourning Walcott, which is after this.
Sounds like a wise move.
Okay, so I apologize, I go back to 5, in case you give me. Continued review of application for subdivision approval and site plan approval, mixed-use commercial residential, 45 Beakman Street, High Street, submitted by Beakman Arts Center LLC, and Bay Ridge Studios LLC.
I don't know who the other guy was, but I'm Taylor Palmer, law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. I am joined by Justin Dates of Colliers, not to be confused with Hudson Land Design, and RIA Siegel, our project architect. As you laid out, Mr. Chairman, we are before you this evening for our site plan and subdivision applications for the proposal to develop the property with two, four-story mixed-use commercial multifamily residential buildings, to be located at 45 Beakman and High Streets. This is one of those instances where I think we're approaching somewhere in the range of like 16 or so, or 17 appearances before the board. At the board's last meeting in July, the applicant did, excuse me, the board did close the subdivision lot merger and site plan public hearings, and authorized the planning board to draft approval resolutions for the project in consideration of tonight's meeting. We have reviewed the draft approval resolution, we did make some limited comments to the city attorney. We're not asking the board to take any action tonight, really it's just a discussion regarding the changes that we presented. These minor revisions to the plan include updating the landscaping plan, to switch the inkberry plantings along the western corner of the property, which is near High Street, for green giant arborvitae, in order to add screening height that was sought to benefit the adjacent neighboring properties on High Street. Revising the lighting plan to eliminate certain hotspots, highlighted by your consultants, next to the Beakman Building. And then altering the clock, the corner tower on Beakman Street building to replace the clock with a simplified lantern design, akin to the tower on the High Street Building, with that change is intended to create a more cohesive design throughout the development. In doing so, we now propose a low-pitched roof on the tower instead of a flat roof, which creates a more traditional appearance. Those are in response to comments from the board. Lastly, altering the rear elevation during the public hearing. Lastly, altering the rear elevation design to reflect similar detailing on the front of the building, in terms of windows placement and proportions, setting back the fourth story, the setback of the fourth story, and the additional brick detailing, along with modifications to the stair tower, to better ingrate those windows. So with that, I think we'll just turn over to the board if there are specific comments, but we're not asking the board to take any action tonight, really just discussion for the changes that we've made.
I don't really have anything to say that hasn't already been said.
Okay. Kevin?
I think that the rear facade is improved. I think that, as far as the clock, I think it's just a difficult thing to pull off. One of the things that I keep talking about is like, when you have repeating elements, like the two towers that are on the two separate buildings, they have similarities, but they shouldn't be identical, right? They should be variations of theme, and I think that there is some, it's, there's still a lot of, I don't know, it's like nitpicking at this point, you know? It's, it is a different scale than the rest of the building, the sort of, the globes and the, it seems a little busy to me, but I don't want to, I don't want to go on and on.
What's your, what's your take, from an Airbnb perspective? What's your take on the, on the theme of the trim elements, like in this case, was formerly the clock tower, and is now got a kind of, you know, prism on top of it, some, you know, different tube, but in the theme with the other tower on the other building? The molding that juts out from the face of the, of the structure, which also seems to be kind of mirrored in the way the window, you know, trim juts out from the brick, at least in the renderings, I don't know if I can see it, you know, in the elevation drawings or the details, to know exactly what's happening, but, but there's something about the way that these elements are punching out from the plane of the wall, that is, is to me, kind of evaporates the warmth you get from the brick and some of these details, and makes it very, it's, I don't know, to me, it's like visually aggressive, and it's kind of, it's very cold, and I don't know if you, I'm curious what you think about it.
Are you talking about the brick portion?
Well, I'm talking about the, in the tower, the way the framing around the new, you know, multi-pane window, or simulated multi-pane window, is like two levels of metal jutting out from the, from the face of the metal. And then when you look at the windows and the brick, it appears, at least in the rendering, that the trim is, it's like a cookie cutter projecting outward from the facade of, you know, from the plane of the brick wall. And, and I think like, I'll just, I don't know, it's, I don't know how I can describe as well, but, but when you, when you introduce brick, you get a warmth, and a irregular, pleasing element, pleasing colors, there's variation in the brick, and then these, what looks like these kind of, you know, cookie cutter window elements, sort of like work against that, and-
What's kind of uncanny, I think, about it, is that it's not designed in a traditional way, where you'd have a weathering surface on the top, and you'd have a sill on the bottom, that we're doing two different things, and we're designed differently, right? So this is like a picture frame, which would be like an interior setup, so everything's framed, it's a more modern way to do a surround of an opening, right, where it's picture-framed, and it isn't even done the same way, it's not even a similar thing in the other metal portions-
No. And the windows are sent into this recess in the brick, but then they burst back out again.
So if that was, if that was, if that was less, less pronounced, right, if that frame on that top part was less pronounced, but more pronounced, right, this is where you have to vary it, because this is a more designed element, right? Where it was a more pronounced version of the detailing that happened in the panels between the two brick, you see what I'm saying? Like, there's, there's an edge condition around those windows, in the metal panels, in the field, right? There're vague windows, and there's metal, and there's going to be a sill, right? There's going to be drips and other things, in the, in the, in the field of metal, I'm talking about-
On the tower.
Not on the tower, on the other-
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
On the tower, what you have is these picture frames, you have two picture frames, one of them's in the center part, and the bottom and the top are the same, and the sides, it's all the same extrusion, or the same profile, and a similar thing is happening on the top. So part of it is, it looks weird because it's so pronounced, right, and it's different, and it's not different in a way that's, seems conventional or normal, where it would be done with conventional, traditional construction, right? So that's one of the odd things about it. And then on top of that, which is just more modern picture framing, you have a super-detailed Victorian globes, right, the sort of wind, wind vane detailing-
It's like a lightning rod. Let's call it lightning rod with, you know, like the glass globe kind of thing.
Which, if you start doing that-
You definitely don't want to do weather vane.
That has to occur in other parts, like, I think, that can't be like the unique area. We're getting it real-
But I think, you know what, the only reason I think it's worth, I don't want to belabor to death, but I think it's worth talking about because there's been a lot of discussion of, you know, how the view of the structure from folks who have historic properties on High Street, you know, impacts their quality of life and I think some of these fenestration details are, are making this look really cold and that it may, if they were modified a little bit, I think, because I don't, I'm not troubled by the windows that are in the metal bays, they look more, they're, they seem recessed and they just seem more, you know, kind of traditionally constructed, but the ones that are punched out look really weird to me.
Because they're unconventional and it's also bold, right? If, if you just did it in a very subtle way, you wouldn't notice it, it'd just be very flush and it would, it would just sort of be an abstract new wave sort of like detail, but when you pop it out that much, that's out like four, six inches, right? And, and if you were actually measuring it, so that has a bold shadow, it like pops out and it's, and it's, it's, it's different in a way that's not, it's not well-designed, I guess, right?
I don't know, well, I'm just, I'm not making any comments, I'm just, I'm trying to keep my observations as objective as I can, just saying that it is, it's jarring to me, so.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree. And, and all this is, I think, in the spirit of trying to make the project better and I could talk about this for another two hours if you wanted to.
Without John Gunn here, we can totally do it.
I mean, in terms of that, that detail, I mean, you know, it's something that's been there for a while, we wanted to have that sort of tension between the, the traditional brick and the more modern glazing, but like on that one, would you just not make it as prominent and-
You know, more-
Instead of four inches, make it two inches or something.
I would be more considerate about it, you know? I mean, you've designed a lot of this, there's a consistency in the back that you might want to also have happen here and the, if I recall, I'm not looking at it right now, but the way that you have detailed the surround on the other building is, is slightly different from that still, right? So, like I said, you, you don't want to, you don't want to mimic it, you don't want to copy it exactly, but if there's more of a consistency or a variation on that, like where it's a smaller scale or larger scale, that's like when you get into these really subtle, nice differences where you're like, oh, you don't, you can't put your finger on it, but there's a sophistication sometimes when you can pull that off, you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, just for comparison, that, I stole that detail from myself on 536 Main Street. So, I mean, we have looked at it and, but, but I understand it's a different condition, so.
They create artist's steal, right?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Perfect. John?
Taylor, could you give us an update as where we stand with acquisition of the land from DOT?
Sure, I may, if I may. We did get a letter from the New York State DOT indicating that they've done their review and they're putting, effectively putting it up for sale now to the applicant going through the next motion. So we will, so as to not offend the chairman's request at the prior meeting, provide a copy of that to the board for our supplemental submission, but that has been, we relayed that to council as it relates to a legal issue as far as the ownership of the property, but the DOT has effectively completed that process, so now it's more of a procedural, just more procedure, but they have authorized the sale.
Okay. Just a few minor comments. One, we have some curb breaks for storm drainage, I've asked them for some modifications to that. And then two, they were going to be relocating a sewer on a neighboring parcel, I've asked for more detailed plans with regards to that.
Yep. So, one is just asking for clarification, I think, from the applicant, well, actually maybe both of them are. So for the trash enclosure, there's two trash enclosures proposed, they're both 10 by 12, they're kind of located behind each of the buildings. I think there's been conversation, first just wanted to note in the code that I, I believe that accessory structures such as trash enclosures are permitted to be located in the rear inside yard setbacks, so just wanted to clarify that because I know that was a question. I think there's been a comment about them being so close to some of the rear yards of neighbors, so it would be helpful to just go through and explain why those locations were selected and maybe if you looked at others and why those weren't as appropriate as these ones. The other comment is about building height, so again, there's been comments about the mechanical and the stair towers going above the permitted height of four stories and 48 feet, so those are permitted to extend above the max height up to 15 feet and I noticed in the elevations that we did not have that called out, so I think that might be helpful to show what the height is of that mechanical equipment above that, alternatively what could be if it was to move forward, I think what we discussed was in the resolution, you would be capped at that, but I think it's more helpful to just show-
I think it's both, yeah.
Yeah, show that you are meeting that requirement. So I think that's just a comment from me on the height, but a question from me on the trash enclosure.
Yeah, I'll have Justin Dates from Colliers just go through that and just sort of lay out for you the adjustments we've made to where those trash enclosures are, first responsive to the public and then I think further beyond from the board, now your comment, Natalie.
Okay.
Good evening, Justin Dates, Colliers Engineering Design. So the, there's a dumpster for each of the buildings, as, as you mentioned, and they're, they're located within, you know, the closest proximity to the rear access points of both the buildings. So if we start with the Beakman Building, the larger of the buildings, within that northern side of the, the building inside there, that's kind of where the trash room is and there's a door that goes out the side of the building there on the west and that would provide, you know, the shortest distance to that particular dumpster enclosure. Each of the enclosures is, it's a masonry enclosure-
Okay.
-with the, the exterior finish is to be the same brick as is on the proposed buildings and then the doors will be made up of, there's the metal paneling that's in like that olive or that greenish color, we would look to have the doors, those would be solid screen doors essentially, to, to close the, be the, you know, the closing gates on the trash enclosure. All right, it's got a height of six and a half feet, so dumpsters that would fit within that enclosure typically max out around like six feet, so they are a little bit higher from that standpoint to screen.
The enclosure will be higher than the-
The closure would be higher than the-
The receptacle inside of it, yeah.
Yeah, the trash receptacle itself, yes. So then, similar with the, the High Street Building, this one, we, we did make a minor shift to the east from our prior designs, you know, there's comments from the adjacent property owner on 16 High Street about its proximity, proximity, I'm sorry, to his, his residence, so we did move that away from there as far as we could, with still maintaining, you know, an effective use for that High Street Building, right? Like making it within close proximity for them to, to access it and utilize it. Also, when we look at how they will be, the trash will be collected, right? We're envisioning the, the truck will come off of Beakman, it'll come in, they're able to open the gates, do a front load of that particular enclosure for the High Street Building, they're able to continue to the east into the site and do the same thing with the one behind the Beakman Building. So we feel that both these locations will minimize the backing up of the, of the vehicle, the conflicts within the site, any other locations, we think it could just propose more, you know, noise from that sense or circulation conflicts, so that's why we feel where we have.
Thank you. I think that's helpful, I appreciate you explaining that because I think there's just been comments about why does it have to be there, so I think that, that all makes sense.
The other thing I noticed is, I think, one of the board members mentioned kind of like that view shed, right? Like our site driveway off, off of Beakman, it is set back, you know, a little over 100 feet from the curb line there. I was looking at the, the views just down the street from us, they have a similar situation where their main access, their trash enclosures are right at their main access, but much closer to the highway, so, or the roadway. So I think ours is set back significantly more than, than theirs and actually a little bit smaller for the one, for the High Street Building, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, that's our reason issue today, we just asked the board to continue to, to next month, I know you have a draft resolution, but we would have that for fuller discussion at the next meeting day. We've incorporated a lot of changing, we upgraded the plantings, we've gotten taller, bigger, larger, while the building has changed to modify, as I mentioned tonight, with the board members to really get a lot more work in the back of the building, you know, tonight we focused interestingly on the corner, but that's been an evolution of this project since the beginning and really kind of just all of a sudden came to a point at the last meeting, but rightly so. So we're trying to get all these fine tuning details so that it's embodied, as Natalie mentioned, both on the plan and in the resolution, so I think that's easy to do in things like the lighting and landscaping, but we are hopefully going to get a firm direction on the, the corner as we get there for next month.
Excellent, thank you. See you in a second.
Randall, I'll just mention, we did prepare the draft resolution as directed, if the board has any comments on the resolution, you don't have to give them tonight, but if you want to send me your comments before the next meeting, that would be helpful and I can update it for the next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now we got number six. Continued review of application for site plan approval, special use permit, hotel and restaurant, 1064 Walcott Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned earlier, just for the record, on behalf of the applicant, Taylor Palmer from Cuddy and Fader, we are going to request that we adjourn tonight's presentation so that we have a full complement of the board for next month. This was just a programmatic submission, we wanted to sort of identify the changes, sort of the readjustment of how these, the layout of the building is and what's in what building, the historic building and the proposed addition, so just, you know, spoiler alert, but it's already in your packages. The historic building now is going to be really the focal point of, I guess, the, the change is designed to help, you know, enhance the prominence of the historic building while working in other design and that will also give us some additional time to maybe work even in some of the engineering and other comments. This was just a, an aesthetic submission to try and respond to the board's comments and hopefully get some feedback. So tonight, we're just adjourning, but we're going to keep developing, for example, the entrance to the building and likely work in as best we can, some of that landscaping comments that Karen had mentioned, kind of between the two buildings, because there is a really unique relationship there and I think for the whole operation, so. I don't know if it will be a full engineering and, you know, envelop traffic submission, but now that we have that additional time, we may incorporate that in there so that might be in position to set for hearing as we go down, down the road.
All right, so you adjourned that one. Seven?
Yes. For the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicants.
Let me read it in.
Yeah, please.
Okay, continued review of application for subdivision approval and site plan approval, residential five-unit multifamily dwelling, 195, I mean, it's 193, 195 Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Taylor Palmer with the, on behalf of the applicant. As mentioned, we are going to be requesting to adjourn this meeting, the reason for that, not so much the quorum as it is, we recently received a determination from the building inspector with respect to the new building, so we are updating the project design. What we did incorporate into this submission, just for the board members that are reviewing it, is some articulation and changes to the building itself, so the windows or the openings in this, in the building itself will be continued into what our revised design will be, but this will become an addition to the existing building from Main Street. So it will not be a new building, it will be an addition to the existing, so it'll be set back but attached. So for those keeping track of the Planning Board TV show, that is the spoiler or the coming attraction for this application, but we are requesting that you adjourn tonight so we can work to respond to Brian's memorandum and of course, adjust the building program to properly situate it as an addition.
Item number eight. Reviewed of application for subdivision, subdivision approval, residential and commercial, 105 to 107 Catherine Street.
Good evening, Mike Bodendorf, Hudson Land Design, engineer for the applicant. So this proposal is a two-lot subdivision for a single lot located with frontage on Catherine Street and frontage on Rambout Avenue. This is the existing conditions plan that we're looking at here, so the, I'm just sort of tracing the overall parcel. So what the applicant is looking to do is subdivide this parcel off, which was originally subdivided in that fashion back in the late 1800s. Actually, I'm going to back up here, there's an existing stormwater line that traverses through the residential portion of the parcel, we're looking to relocate that stormwater line to traverse between these two residential parcels and just to clarify, all of these parcels, this parcel, the subject parcel, and the parcel adjacent to the left up here is owned by the same owner. So the proposal calls for relocating the stormwater line and creating a residential lot which is currently used as material storage, so we'll be bringing this more to, in concert with the residential neighborhood and removing an unsightly storage facility. We are showing development on an approved residential building lot to demonstrate that it can be built on after moving the stormwater line. We will be providing a 20-foot wide easement to the city for that stormwater line. On the north portion of the site, there are some non-conforming uses, there's an existing auto repair, as I said, there was storage on these lots to the south. On this plan, I'm showing how the parking lot could be striped to demonstrate that all parking can be provided on that portion of the lot after the lot is subdivided for those uses. There's existing water and sewer stubs that go into both of these lots, John Russo had a comment to verify the location of those and they're actually, those are surveyed locations, John, there's a cleanout visible at the ground surface and a water service valve.
My concern was the proximity to one another, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're already there. These, we are envisioning having garages in these houses, they're not fully designed yet, but we'll come back with a, with a more detailed design that shows the front door, garages, and we'll be parking inside the garages. That's generally it, if the board has any comments, questions?
Yep, it's kind of my standard comments for subdivisions, I feel like there is a provision about preserving natural features as much as possible, so did a quick aerial scan, but just wasn't sure if there's trees on site, what's being removed, what's being saved.
Yep.
And then, you already noted, there's provision that the front of the building, you know, the front, frontage and entrance should face the Main Street, so looks like it's going to be that way, but just indicating on the plans.
Sure.
Yep.
So we would request, like we do for all applicants, an inflow and infiltration study be conducted of all the sites since they're all involved in this at this point in time. Construction costs estimate be prepared as the project progresses along for public improvements. On subdivision plan, meets and bounds for the proposed and existing drainage easement should be provided on the plan. As we go along, a description of the easement will need to be submitted for review, a note, we would recommend a note be included on the plan, more or less stating that no structures, pools, fencing, trees, bay windows extending out from the sides of the houses shall be constructed or planted within the proposed drainage easement, you know, specifically with the bay windows, we've only got 20 feet and I have to get an excavator in there and that boom swings, we're taking stuff off the side of the house. We needed some updates on the existing drainage plan with regards to the subdivision plan. We want some additional labeling done on the drainage run that you're putting in. We also noticed a discrepancy between what's on the plan and what's on the profile, so that should be updated. We'd also like the note with regard to the easement appearing on the subdivision plan As far as the driveways for the two residential parcels, they're centered directly on the buildings, is, you're actually going into the center of the, each of the-
No, we just, what we're thinking is, it's going to be an offset garage to each side of the structures, you know, obviously that will be refined during architectural review, but the thought is to, you know, the, the house on the right side that would probably have the garage on the right side and the house on the left side would have the garage on the left side, so it's sort of a, where they could be, you know, on each side, but those driveways are positioned where there's existing curb cuts. There's two existing curb cuts there, so we want to use what's there.
You can use them in-
Yeah, so we'll adjust the driveways accordingly to-
It just looked odd to have a drive- It just looked odd to have a driveway directly centered on the front.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it's just because we weren't fully developed with the look of the house yet, but we'll definitely come in with better detail on that.
Some of the other things I recommended is, since we're still going to have the uses on the back lot on the Catherine Street side, some landscaping across the back of these two residential lots being proposed to provide buffering from one to the other, with the exception of in the easement area. Maybe bushes or whatever else, but no trees or fencing going across that area. And then some of the others was just cleanup comments on the construction.
Just for clarification, the I and I, the building department is planning on doing their own I and I, so if they do an I and I, does the engineer need to do an I and I, just out of saving my client some money?
No, in the past, they've submitted a report, so...
Yeah. Okay.
Can you plan on doing that?
Scott.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jennifer?
I need a moment to you. This is a...
Just call it the schedule.
We have to put the application in, but we'll put that in.
I apologize in advance if I'm missing someone obvious here. I may be... With reference to the diagrams up on the screen right now, the residential lot at the bottom left already exists.
Correct.
Is it just on the plans because that easement's being relocated?
Correct. Yeah, and I just want to demonstrate that it still can be built on with the easement.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out why that was there, that explanation.
Right, and I think it'd have to be part of the application just because of the easement.
Need to do two things with this, right? It's an undiscussed action.
Right, so the only step really for the planning board to take tonight would be authorize circulation of notice of intent to the extent there are any involved agencies. We can take a closer look at that and reach out to Mr. Bodendorf to coordinate on that. If there are no other involved agencies, you can just proceed without circulating and undertake an uncoordinated review to the extent, you know, any involved agencies come up in the future.
If I may, I don't believe there's any outside agencies. There's no wetlands. There's no health department approval on this. I don't think we need GML referral.
No.
It doesn't hurt to...
Yeah.
Yeah, let's put some motion to...
To the extent.
To the extent. Or notice to active lead agency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And is the board in a position to be able to schedule a public hearing for next month?
Sure. I don't see why not.
Motion to schedule a public hearing for next month.
Second.
All okay?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
In that regard, I'm sorry, we would also then need a motion directing preparation of secret documents, since this is a subdivision, and we do secret before opening the public hearing.
Okay, motion.
Motion to prepare a secret document.
Draft negative secret document.
Draft negative, okay. Motion to draft a negative secret document.
Negative declaration.
Yes.
Negative declaration, sorry.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We just did our secret training.
So we're going to move on to the architectural review items. We have one, two, three, four, five. So number one is certificate of appropriateness for 139 Main Street. Are they here?
Did you get a sensitive email when I came back this evening? I had received an email that they were suggesting to come back in September. Nobody was going to be able to make it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I didn't see that one, sorry. Item number two, certificate of appropriateness for 1203 North Avenue, different site. You can come to the table. Do you have items or is anybody...
I think I do. I was all...
Uh-huh.
So this is a picture of the exterior, and that's...
What you going to...
It's a picture.
Like standing seam roofing, metal roofing?
John, good luck on that shoulder.
So the porch is new, or the most in the...
The porch was redone, yeah. The existing, it was the same as what was there.
Thank you.
It was actually falling into bounds. It was on a...
Oh, okay.
...street ramp. It was two...
Okay. No, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we get your name? Sure, please.
It's my friendly neighborhood State Farm agent.
Yeah.
Hope you don't have to pierce yourself.
I don't think I do.
Yes.
Seems like paint for insurance.
I'm not the one...
Oh, Jennifer Leth already, right?
Yeah. How are you getting the brick red? Painting it or...
We're going to have it media blasted to get the paint off of it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
Are you painting the brick?
We're going to bring it back to...
Oh, you stripped the paint off?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's like a repaint, you have to use...
It is painted now.
Okay, yeah. And they didn't use a mason repaint, and it's really bad for the brick to not have any paint on it.
Yeah. Nobody realizes this, but yeah, all that old mortar, people screw it up all the time, with new mortar and with bad paint.
Just the motion. Are you good with it?
Yes. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Certificate of appropriateness for 155 Main Street, sign. Come on down.
Hi there.
It's just you and I. Tell us what you're doing.
So we're opening a barber shop at 155 Main Street. It's called Chisel, and... Oh, can you just give us your name?
Yeah, I'm sorry, give your head, sorry.
Richard Bureo and Liz Bureo. Yes, opening barber shop at 155 Main Street, lying here tonight for signage for a blade sign. There was previously a blade sign on Stella's Buy Market. We're proposing to use the same iron arm, but we would ask to move it from the brick facade on the right of the, where it currently is, the right of the storefront, to the center door opening and replace the blade sign with an oak that has been treated with a stain. And then the name of the business will be etched in, and then the etching will be painted white.
Same size as what was there?
It is, I think it's a little rectangular, but it's the same general parameters.
Yeah. Are you having the sign manufactured by someone or yourself?
So, no, we're proposing to manufacture the sign, and we can, you know, utilize agro hooks or chain to the, just like a single link to attach it. Husband's also a woodworker in addition to me.
So there's no, so these are going to be chained?
Yes, they are.
They're not going to be signed?
They are, yeah.
But I'd make it myself too, but just always going to ask if you had somebody lined up to actually construct it, so to make sure that's going to work out.
Motion.
What about the...
Wait, wait, what's wrong?
Yeah, so I was going to say...
General question. I just hope that the sign ordinance allows the barber pole.
Yeah, we didn't discuss the barber pole element yet.
And because if it doesn't, we should definitely allow it, if that's a gray area or anything like that.
No, it doesn't not allow it.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it. That doesn't look like a sign.
Because we had the lighted sign and stuff.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a sign.
It doesn't run afoul of, yeah, so it's not a sign. So it doesn't become like lighted sign where it's something...
Motion on...
Motion.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Sure. David had the motion, I had, Len had the second. Yeah, good luck. You're welcome.
I'm telling you, it's like 11:30 tonight, you know that?
I'm so psyched right now. I'm like...
Yeah, I mean, I was really pushing to, yeah.
Item number...
Four.
For certificate appropriateness, 9 Alice Street, single-family home. How many of you were? How many of you? Just introduce yourself so she can put you in record.
I'm Gianni Valavalle.
Thank you. Melissa Valavalle, thank you. I'm Arlo Stig.
Yeah, sure.
Miss Stonechuck.
There it's, it's right here.
Where are we? Not too far away from me.
We're close to our pusher, sort of.
Okay.
Going up the mountain.
Yeah.
It's a cool neighborhood. A lot of people have their senses. But it's also very funky, right? There's a lot of variety, it's not consistent.
It's got a little bit of...
Funky in a good way.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of different characters.
Yeah.
Look at these stuff on here. You present, please, what you got.
Okay, so the brick we're proposing is the black brick, so we're using the black granite brick, okay? The vertical cedar siding, which on the two gables, is a gray, a V-joint cedar, right here, okay? And it's hardened siding, and this is the hardened siding that we're proposing, which is the color pearl brick.
So the brick is on that one column?
Correct. There's two columns on each side of them both.
Oh, because it looks like on this...
Yeah, the rendering is a change.
It's like a stone face or something. So what's on, and what's on top?
A cable brick.
Okay, I got it.
The renderings in the application are the same as those, or did something change?
It's the same, except we made a few changes to it. So what you're seeing is the two drawings in that.
Okay, all right, so it's the second drawing with the modifications handwritten.
Correct, the modifications handwritten.
There you go. Yeah, so the elevation is correct.
The elevation.
The elevation, one is clear, and then the other one they rolled on, so I...
Yeah, the elevation is correct.
But the elevation reflects what you're building. Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was going to say.
Any comments, Ted?
Just...
And a charcoal roof. I didn't match it.
Yeah. And what's the roof's material?
Architectural asphalt.
Okay. That's the brick.
This is the brick.
And it's a thin brick?
It's a thin brick.
Okay.
Correct. And the corners will be corner bricks, so it won't look like they're at all.
Which is the charcoal one?
Charcoal is that one.
Thank you.
How does the front facade of the building align with the homes that are adjacent to it?
I'm going to align the front elevations. I hope I think it is, the elevations are going to be aligned. There's several weird things about this that I can nitpick. I don't have necessarily a problem with the materials. I think it could have been a little more, you know, that's just to my taste. It could be more lively, gray.
Well, sometimes the plants will make it look less lively than it would done with the shorter.
You can, it's a tough game. It's like the brick is going to be, I think the brick is going to look funny because it's so thin and it comes out, but...
But you want to notice that it's thin because it's going to look like a real gray because the corners are going to be full.
It's going to be a textural difference more than anything else. It's a big house.
Yes, it's a size lot.
Yeah. And so your house or your building?
I'm building.
Your building, okay.
David?
It looks like, the renderings aren't totally up to... Wait, dude, you've got the brick on both sides of the...
Yeah, the renderings are outdated.
Correct, the renderings are outdated. The plans evolved kind of from the rendering instead of...
And I got to tell you, this is just my opinion, and it doesn't affect the approval or anything, but I think it's always a good idea to use an architect when you're designing a home rather than an engineer. That's not denigrating the...
No, but we've used basic courses since I started, since 99, since I started.
I'm just telling you my opinion.
No, I understand.
And I think that you would have, I think you'd have a better product. Even if you're just selling it and wanted to move faster, get a higher price or whatever, I think there's definitely a, there's a difference between somebody who can, you know, that is a difference. And I'm sure he has an architect in-house or somebody who's designed this thing, but I, and like I said, doesn't person or anything.
No, no, it's...
There's a difference in quality, and this is a residential area, and I...
Can I get a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, just, it's a residential area, to be frank. Just kind of a cornucopia of styles or colors.
It's kind of fits so...
Yeah, so motion to, motion to approve.
Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you so much. It'll be beautiful when it's done.
Okay, no, no, I promise you, I've done a pretty good deal. I get it.
Yeah, architecturally diverse concerns about...
Neighborhoods with, you know, older homes and...
They're not consistently historic.
No, I get it. I understand. It's a plea.
There's something about the symmetry, you know, the sort of like, the repeated elements and the symmetry around that central column of windows that it's like, it's kind of interesting, but there's something almost like, a little bit forced about it, you know, and, you know, do you...
No, I get it. Don't get me started, you know.
Let's, we got one more, one more.
Yeah, actually we have one more.
Yeah, it's sort of like...
You're close to being out of your...
It's like a...
You ready to go?
Yeah. Again, I don't mean to dig deep down either, but it almost looks like, you know, like a series of stencils or shapes are just kind of superimposed on each other, like, you know, like stencil art or, it's, yeah, it's a little too much. I almost like...
There's a lot of it's hurt.
I almost would like, get rid of one of those tiny gables or something, you know, so that's not so balanced out on both sides with, you know, the larger gable and then the smaller gable. It's twinned, you know, it would almost be better for that.
You got your approval. Bye.
Item number five, certificate of appropriateness for 39 Townsend Street.
It's, I, I... Impatient.
If I could just get your name. Tina Townsend. I'm here to be happy to speak to you. So I'm here because I'm looking at approval for a design of a previously approved front elevation.
Okay.
We were previously, we came here to, for approval for a field model, but since then we've had somebody interested in the property, and she wants to proceed and change the color of the outside of the house.
So it's just a color change?
It's the color and, so it's the color of the siding.
Which lot is this? I'm sorry.
This was the, this is 39 Townsend Street, lot 12. They were your last one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this was approved already?
Right.
Okay, it was black windows, the board and batten, and the front of the house completely.
So that's what we saw?
That's what we saw.
Okay, I don't know what we approved.
Yeah, that looks a lot better.
This is the one that she wants.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, like half of New Jersey is filled up with the first one.
So question, you said what else is changing other than the color?
Is it roof changing?
The roof is, yeah. This is the roof.
No, no, what else is changing?
The color of the windows.
Okay.
So they're going to be white, and they are going to be grills.
The porch, isn't it?
Nope, the porch is the same. It's just the siding here. She wants regular siding, which I have that for you.
So she's still going to have board and batten and wood else, except on the porch where it'll be clambered style, and I guess on the side.
Yes.
I was like...
And that'll be the color for everything?
Yes.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, what is, what's the advantage of having like clambered on the side and board and batten on the front? Is there like a...
I think it's less expensive.
Is it, which is the, are the clambered ones less expensive or the board and batten?
Yeah, this is going to be less expensive than the board and batten.
It's fine.
Are we good with the color change?
Yeah, that's not true if you're doing real wood. Board and batten is cheaper than wood clambered.
Are we good with the color changes?
I'm good with it. Anybody else care?
Color change is fine.
I mean, can I, so that's primarily what we're doing is changing colors and modifying in the trim, in the window, and...
You said there's gonna be grills.
And then, there's gonna be grills here. The windows are gonna be similar, but we couldn't do that with this program when we were doing these elevations, the print, the printouts for you.
Now, I mentioned before the porches, right? Now, all the porches, I, that if you pull it in or pull it out, if you don't have it lined up with the side, for that side elevation, it looks super awkward to have a small triangle that's sticking out of it, right?
Yes.
So, I noticed that that didn't happen.
So, let's, let's, let's finish the color, let's...
No, no, I just wanted to finish a comment with the exact, we've been having a conversation about that.
It just happens to be next to the other, there happens to be an example of this next to that site we're just looking at.
See how that is?
Yes.
And that's, that's what was built. And, and I'm just telling you that it's, it's, it's a big improvement to do that thing that I was mentioning, it's like pulling it in or pulling it out and wrapping it, wrapped back around, it's a, it's a, it makes a big difference. And you know, you're a designer, right? And you can see...
I'm the sales manager there.
You're the sales manager, I'm sorry. Oh, well, assumed, I guess.
It's a very, it ends up looking kind of extruded, like it came out of Play-Doh fun factory.
I didn't recognize it at first, but after you said that, a couple of the last meetings, a couple of months ago, yeah.
So, so, because we're not here to talk about that, we're changing colors?
We're just like, once you come back to us.
Yeah, 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 let's just, are you good with the color changes?
Yes. I like, all right, boom, motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye. Y'all can have a wonderful time talking about it.